No, Monday.
Right.
That's what's on schedule for, yeah.
Okay. First, before I start the meeting, Ash says we can run past six o'clock if we have to. I was gonna put five thirty, six thirty, that we can start our meeting later. Okay, call this meeting order, State Council, State Municipal, Utility Joint Meeting, Council Chancellors, ten to eight, June, Monday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-five, five thirty PM. Roll call. Russell?
Here.
Doley?
Here.
Cobham?
Here.
Morgan?
Here.
Patrick?
Hey, Utilities Sherman?
Yeah, here.
Horton?
Here.
Crawford?
Here.
Melton?
Here.
Amy?
Here.
Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Make motion.
I'll second.
There you go. Russell?
Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
Cobham?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
No. You should.
Sherman?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Amy, yes.
Okay, two non-union employer wages, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. I did have, uh, the city print off what the school did with their wages. With their higher wages up ninety to a hundred dollars, they have a flat fee on this.
Okay, can I say something?
Yeah.
Okay. There's two things. I'm here for the consumers here in town, and I'm doing for their vote. Another thing is, um, I would like to see a higher wage freeze for two reasons. One is, we don't know what legislature's gonna do in the fall when they come back with the TIP money or the franchise fee. And the other thing is, the money, we're all hurting, everybody's hurting. So the money that, if we did a wage freeze, the money that is in the budget already, like the utilities could put that towards their generator to help with the costs on that. That's all I gotta say.
I guess clarification on that, are you talking, is there something currently wrong with the current generators? Or are you talking for future projects?
We're talking like, we're gonna have to get a new one over here on the north.
Yes.
The substation. And it's gonna cost a lot of money. And we're trying to make it so we can pay for most of it. But if we don't get that franchise fee, we're gonna be hurting. I mean, we have a reserve. But I don't wanna go in debt. And I don't wanna have to raise the town people's, um, bills, any.
Well, if the franchise fee goes away, it means we would have to raise it one percent more than what the franchise fee did. Because from what I remember from the last meeting was that four percent that that franchise fee is bringing in on everybody's utilities is the equivalent of five percent if it was just on our utility bills. If we just raised our rates instead of the franchise fee, it'd be one percent difference. If that franchise fee goes away, of all the raises we've gotta do.
I think the implications of these, uh, intelligent folks in the State House, what they're looking at doing is terrible. And the changes that they looked at puts the city council in a very desperate position, potentially. And they didn't do anything this year, but the same folks are going back out the next year. And I think they'll try to tangle something through. I, I, is that, I mean, that's what, I see your point is there's, these are interrelated expenses. And you don't know what is actually going to be available.
Exactly.
And so you've got to-
Exactly.
The insurance is funded through, um, we paid for our health insurance, you guys bought for yours. One of the proposals to, one of your ques- or a question is, you guys bought for that because it's cheaper. And if they're looking at removing that, if they remove that, your tax rate could go up fifteen to twenty percent unless there's changes in health insurance, like making employees pay twenty percent like everybody else does. So I mean, there's a ton of issues that, um, the state is looking at imposing on the city's accounts. It's just not great at all, so.
I don't think as a council, we've had any real discussion on, on employee contribution to healthcare. I think we brought it up once and it just kinda sat there and nobody really said anything about it. But like Brian was saying, and I know this too, you know, we would bond for that, that can go away, you know? So just to pay for that, you know, you're looking at three dollar increase on your levy, just to pay for insurance. Just for insurance, you know?
So then how does that interact with the utilities on your costs? I would offer up as a utility board member that we need to be, you guys, the city councils helped the utility board out with two things. One, the speed cameras, which never came into fruition, but it was again meant to help, uh, provide some additional revenue without just jacking tax rates up and jacking utility and water rates up. Never came about, but that partnership was there. The second one was this franchise fee. You guys may, the sustainability of that eighty percent vote may not be there because of the state's decisions. And to go back and try to raise taxes or whatever, Ash doesn't know he's not doing, right? I mean, is that not, you know, you've got the state, uh, and, you know, that's what Rob's saying, but I can't wait to go vote for him. He says one party government has gotten us into this point for ten years, and that's exactly right. So, I mean, I can't, I don't know, for another year, uh, for another year, you don't know what's gonna happen. And that's, I don't know, that's, I agree with you on some of the points you mentioned. But, and the other one, uh, you know, you can take an operational bond out, that's another one they're looking at removing or eliminating. You will not be able to borrow for operational costs. So, I mean, those are, you know?
Those are big things.
Yeah.
You know, those are big things because that'll all affect the levy come around, we have to look at that, or could. Or a reduction in, in services, possibly.
To me, it'd be wise if, it'd be wise if Ash and Chip put together some sort of implications of these changes or proposed changes. And if there are none right now, then that's fine, with the likelihood of this next year, I don't know. But there's definitely, everything's just working fine. Ash, you built a ton of reserves on the city and utility side and hats off for all of the decades of work doing that. And the changes that I mentioned are not because of anything anybody in this room's done. It's because of ridiculous behaviors of people who don't even understand what they're voting on. So, that's the state, idiots, right?
I don't know about anybody else on the council side, but I think we do need to take a strong look at employee contribution towards healthcare, uh, as a way to help out, you know? And then it may be something that, you know, you get a, within your salary to kind of compensate for that one time, you know? And then you just move forward, uh, with some sort of a structure. But I don't, I don't think we can do it here tonight without really seeing, you know, if, what if we did eighty, twenty, you know, what? You know, we need to see those numbers. And I, I kinda think we, we had asked to, to get that, and if we didn't, maybe we need to tonight to say, we need to get those numbers. You know, what, what it look like, you know, to have eighty, twenty sharing with employees? And, you know, would we be able to, you know, give them that little bump or whatever, you know? But there's gotta be some options there. And maybe we do need to, uh, bring Chip and Ash out here and say, hey, this is, we need to, we need to see this, you know?
You guys tell us what you want, I mean, what you view as reasonable.
We've already done it for new hires.
That's just new hires, so that was before all this chaos, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it is- Yeah, it would be nice to hear though, or see, um, just some potential numbers that we're facing. And then also, it will, I don't know what other comparisons for other towns, how they do eighty, twenty, ninety, ten? What their salaries are, how that would offset, because if you did eighty, twenty with a whatever percent raise or a flat raise, how, how does that look for us? What you guys have coming actually is not just insurance, is all I'm saying.
Right, right.
We could do nothing today, and utilities could do nothing today, we could act like, you know, pull our hats over our heads and act like nothing's changed. That's just one facet of, of all of those things. And, you know, I don't know, if there's other insurance options that you continue to maintain what it is, you just go through a different company and it lowers the cost, I don't know.
Plus insurance, that would fuck with, right?
It's two thousand dollars.
But in total, what, what is it that we hold on?
So it's about twenty thousand per employee per year, is that right?
Yeah, it's on our, it's on our sheet, so.
In there, so yeah, that's about right.
So, we're talking about, uh, joining employees, please. I, if you wanna freeze the lease, like the, the nature that we're paying.
What I don't understand is what that means for the permanent employees standing in. If they're looking at what these, what the governing bodies are doing, or just calling for a freeze, all these what ifs the state might be doing. Does that mean two month freeze, then we're gonna re-negotiate it? Does that mean we're not gonna do it for sure this year at all? Does it mean indefinite freeze? Until we've gotten all this stuff straightened out, and we've gotten employees that are, you know, doing a good job for the state and kind of expect that hopefully we get some sort of raise this year. Their prices, their, their, uh, expenditures have gone up, you know, inflation has been up. So, I, the other, the other point is, we've got all these what ifs and we've got these big things that might happen. Both, if we're talking three or four percent, uh, we're adding to it, that, that three or four percent, that we have to our expense is a drop in the bucket compared to the things that we might have to renegotiate and re-figure out as governing bodies if some of these things go through. So I don't, I, me personally, I don't like necessarily putting this what-if game. Until we have a little bit better concrete information of what the legislation might, might go through. Uh, I, I don't like leaving our employees in limbo of what this freeze actually means.
So, we can do it for one year?
I guess I don't either, I don't, I'm not, I don't think we should, should act on what it's either. I mean, our employees are still working hard force and everything. And I, I don't think to sit here and try to figure out what the state government is gonna do. When it happens, then we can react, that's all we can do. Because we're gonna have to react anyway, like Neil said, we're not talking a huge dollar number here if we give a raise. I mean, I don't know what the total number is, it's not, we don't really have a number, it's not-
Considering the budget focus.
Four percent would be, for raises, I mean, what's the dollar amount, is it twenty thousand dollars or?
Ten thousand, that's what I mean.
Okay, so that's what we're talking, is that like on the utility side? Okay, so that's what we're talking on our, that's both, both city and utility.
Yeah, we've talked about four, five, is that equal?
Okay.
So, that's why-
I wasn't taking the, I wasn't taking the freeze as like this long-term thing.
No.
It was more of, I guess, I was, is there a deeper study that needs to happen? If this is one part of it, I guess, that's all, I mean, and if that's not what you meant, but.
If we just do for like, just this year, this coming year, until we see what the legislature's going to do, that should give us, if they don't pass it this next year, then hopefully we'll be good. Because that's two years down that they did not pass it, so.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion that we do it for one year.
Or what, what if there's a, what if Ash and Chip were able to put together some science of what these proposals and impacts would be? And that's not, that's not a year, you know what I mean?
I think we should do it for one year, and just, that way, that'll give us time to get everything figured out, hopefully.
Okay, is that what's moved by Chip? Do, is no second?
No second.
Second if I got it. How do you move?
You will do it first, or?
Oh, go ahead.
Sherman?
No.
Horton?
No.
Crawford?
No.
Melton?
Yes.
Amy, yes.
Russell?
No.
Doley?
No.
Cobham?
No.
Morgan?
No.
Here, motion, okay.
So, so I, I like the idea of, you know, maybe we hold off, but we have a, an interim, like Brian was saying. You know, maybe we can go in there. I, I know we hate doing what ifs, you know, and, and I, I respect that the government employees wager or, uh, expenses increase, so do mine, you know? And, uh, you know, trying to, uh, get a raise even out of a multi-billion dollar company. You know, you'd think it would be good, you know, and, and we're a small town. So, uh, could be getting something, I don't know when we might know more about what the state could be doing.
You won't know anything for, that's her point. I was, I'm open to not doing anything, my, I guess, until Ash, Ash is responsible for this. It's his recommendation, he's a four percent. There's questions out there because of the state. And so pulling Chip in, because he's gonna be, he would know some of those implications, right?
Right.
So if those two have a joint recommendation and bring that back in a shorter period of time, I, I would be open to that too.
Right.
I just, there's a lot of-
Because, because the initial implications we got from Chip, it was pretty dire. You know, when he was, when he was talking about it, he stood up here, I think everybody on the council remembered when he stood up here and talked to us about it. You know, it wasn't any small issue. I suppose if, if, uh, Ash, you and Chip could get together and kind of work out something, be able to present to the board and the council, uh, some sort of plan, uh, like what, what do you think would be a good timeframe, month?
Yes.
Good.
Brian?
I, I, I honestly, I mean, I, I honestly, I know, I mean, honestly, your fiscal year starts July first, right?
Yes.
So I mean, we're talking about raises after that point. So I mean, what you guys put together with all of these implications, I mean, that's, that's all I want. I, I'd support something like that, but it's, it's the unknowns of what these folks are gonna do.
And we'll never know, like you said, we, we will never know until it actually happens.
Yes.
But I think getting a good idea-
They don't wanna get caught, you know, uh, without a plan, is all.
Well, that, no, that, yeah, that, that's what I'm saying.
In twenty years of working with Ash and Neil and whoever else, I've never seen such drastic, ridiculous things that cities, counties, and schools have to consider because of the things that have, and a portion of that made it through the Senate. And the reason it didn't make it through the House was because they didn't realize what they were voting on until some of these lobbyists got to. And that's, that's, uh, in, that's in the news, so, I mean.
I can get a hold of Chip.
It's up to you.
I just can, but.
I mean, like July meeting, or are we gonna have another meeting?
Is that too-
Let's take another meeting in July.
Is July to like?
No, I don't know, let's do it until that.
Oh.
With, with, okay, so, uh, make that motion that we, uh, temporarily pause the raises until Ash and Chip are able to provide us with a synopsis of issues, taking into consideration some of the state actions that's happened. Then we can forward it that by October.
Okay. Move by Cobb.
And if there's need for a, a special meeting before July for the same purpose that you guys have, then, then that's fine.
Okay.
A motion to add that, yeah.
Move by Cob.
Hold on a second. How do you vote then? Russell?
Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
Cobham?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Amy?
No.
Motion, but.
Okay. Three, I have headhunter services under my name, but Brian had mentioned he wanted to talk about this. We've got Jim Henderson, I mean, we've got six months and he's walking out the door. And he's gonna talk later in the city, do you have something to talk, I'll say on this, Brian?
Um, whatever you guys adopt, we had just left the joint, this was an issue as a joint item. We talked about adopting the same hiring person, so when Pat needs to hire somebody, he's got contact. The last time we had to hire somebody, we went through a lot of resources and, uh, before we landed on candidates. And so this was just meant to follow, uh, the city's, uh, part of that too.
Okay. So we will keep, what exactly are we doing with that, are we?
Well, I think, you know, I talked to Ash about this, he's got some valid concerns and, um, you know, you hire a consultant and you pay them for what the work, for the work that they do, but you don't wanna pay them for things you don't get, right? So if you want to hire somebody, but don't wanna, uh, have a ton of expenses and not have a hire, right? That's what I mean. So to me, it's, it's, it's his direction on getting that person who may offer, you know, she may, uh, she might have suggestions on how we do things around here today too, because of the expense crunch that we could be in with state implications. That's another thing. She's got a background in, uh, these certified sites that I'm in love with, so.
Right.
I don't, but you don't wanna pay, you don't wanna pay for these.
Yes.
You know?
In the meantime, we have-
We don't wanna hire another hourly two hundred dollar person.
Yeah, in the meantime, we have, I think, Paul McGrew, that, that, Paul McGrew is working with us now. It seems like we have good turnout so far, so far. Uh, Jim is getting a couple of applications and-
No, I've got two phone calls.
What's that?
I've gotten two phone calls, and those two phone calls have been self-generated.
Yes. And, uh, we have a hiring day of September, you know? So from now until September, we need to see the outcome. I think Paul McGrew told us the last few weeks that he will be sharing his classes with us. And we have two council members being called in for all this stuff. So from now until July meeting, we'll be seeing the process of what Paul McGrew is doing on a weekly daily basis. Because we have asked him to share with us the process going through, instead of just coming to us with the result or the application. So there will be something coming out here in the next month or two, because we gave him the direction that we wanna hire by September. Having to go different levels, they don't charge us for anything.
The only, the only thing was, the materials you had on the screen, only one of them had the experience or competency hiring government employees. That was my only thing that, that, that made my draw.
And we had, had a deadline, I think, or a Kennedy deadline of giving somebody else ninety days, if you remember that. The council, of course, the council agreed to that. So where are we on that?
Everywhere in August, April, May, starting in June.
So are we paying fifty, or do we get paid if this is why they answered?
We're not paying anything, we get, they get paid when they hire.
Okay. There's not a lot of risk there.
Right, there is a, like, you know, you have the experience of one individual has the experience of hiring, uh, government employees, this type of thing. I think we went with Paul McGrew because they didn't charge right upfront, you know? But we wanted to see the progress on that, and we had set that deadline of ninety days. So, I mean, that's what we did, that's just facts. So, um, it's a time that we look somewhere else to, to have that come in, you know? There might be additional benefits, you know, like Brian said, and I agree too, you know? Especially for the council, you know, looking at things that we might be able to do around here in case some of that state stuff comes through and how it impacts us. There is, uh, some of the, uh, uh, experience in the certified sites that we're, we've been talking about, you know? So.
We got that gal, the certified site, uh, rep from the state coming on Thursday. And I'm, I'm honestly, I'm very, I'm very dogged on that, just seeing how far it can go. Van Meter was a good business case on what that's gonna, that's gonna add, I don't know, how many million dollars to the town for valuation? And it'd be a huge utility customer, so that's my motive there, and so she's coming on Thursday. So maybe we won't meet her, maybe we will, but, um, it's the, it's the cost. I mean, it's, you can look at forty to a hundred fifty thousand dollars of the cost to the state is what she estimated, so.
Right, that would be the, talking to Chip to about that side.
Maybe we can talk about, uh, headhousing in July meeting. And we'll see what, uh, what the outcome, you know, from the company that's worked right now. And, uh, okay.
I, I got a question. Do you have any applications for us right now for generalization?
You want me to come on?
Yeah.
Yeah. Finish your question. Yes. All right, so we're taking, uh, a different, three different, I would say a three-point approach. So we have a passive recruiting, which is just our marketing of it, for our website, um, and then there's social media as well. We have, uh, an active where our recruiter is actively looking for candidates who fit the profile they're looking for. And then we have on my end, which is the networking component, which is working with, communicating with, uh, different entities who are in the know with, uh, with this position in particular. Um, so I've, I've got some, what I've been doing the last hard month or so, was making those connections. Really, a lot of it comes through networking, right? So we work with, with people who are in the waterway, our industry as far as, and those, the facilities, those who work the control system. So I've already reached out to my contacts there. So asking them for any referrals within the course of their duties, if they run across an operator who fits this profile to share with me, share with them that we have a position that we're looking to fill. Um, so that's the three-point approach that we have going right now. Yes, we do have an applicant, we do have candidates we've already reached out to. Uh, we've had a couple who are actually at the higher level, other than three, um, not really interested in maybe part-time doing it. So like working for two cities as opposed to just one, um, so not necessarily something we're looking for. But, uh, but we are making connections with people. Unfortunately, some people, you know, like in today's world, if they don't know your number, they'll pick up. So part of that is the challenge, right? Just making sure we can actually touch base with these people, either by phone or through email or any of those, those ways that we can, uh, communicate with them. So we're making some progress, we started last week, effectively, really going after it from an active standpoint. So I like what I'm seeing so far right now with, uh, with my lead recruiter, who's on this position. Basically touching base with him every day, how are things going? If there's any candidates that I identify that I can reach out to, I feed him those, those potential candidates, such as the prospects. But, uh, but yeah, so in the first week, we, we've had some progress.
Will you be sharing with us that process? You know, I have two council members, they have Jim, the public group, the later. If we share this information, maybe we'll be able to kind of stay on the conversation.
Right. So right now, um, I've already got this meeting booked for the next, for this, you know, today obviously, but for the next three months to show up here and, and talk with you about what our progress looks like. Um, I've also got, I would be reach out to, to Sarah and just give her some information on where we're at, so that she's in the know. Um, in that process, what I would just like, look, Jimmy, um, if you have applicants that you guys like that you've been agreeing with before, please just let me know.
Yes.
Um, I don't need to know who it is, um, to just let me know so that we know that, hey, if you guys are looking to be forward, then we can allocate our resources elsewhere.
Jimmy, is your designation level on, on, is that public record?
Yeah.
Like grade three, so how many grade three, super licensed, doctor, you're gonna have to count it according to your?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head, um, but all that information is public. And so, uh, utilizing all the resources that we have available to us to identify any of those, whatever the certi- whatever their certification level is. So we're looking for somebody who ideally is a level three, who has Jimmy's experience and skillset. Uh, also looking for somebody who is potentially a two, who could be a three relatively easily. They have the experience, they have the skillset, they just haven't done the certification, right? That's a great opportunity for that person to come in, step up, and take ownership of an operation. Uh, so that's a good selling point for us. Um, and we're also looking for maybe that person who's in a bigger facility, who's one of several threes, who's looking for that opportunity to lead a facility, him or herself.
Uh, as I said, if you share with us this information until we say next meeting in July, I want the council members involved in that process to see if there's a progress or not. And that we said, you don't get paid on when you hire somebody.
Correct, right.
You know that, that's better. You know that.
Right, so the agreement we have is on a contention basis. So basically that means if you guys hire somebody tomorrow, congratulations. That's it. There's no fee, there's no money, anything changes. You know, and that's, our goal as a company is working with you as a partner. We want you to fill this position, whether it's through us or for yourself. Either way, it's, yes, we would like you to be through us, but at the same time, there's a need that you are a partner in this relationship. We want you to be happy, and whether that's through us or not, there's no consequence. I would be just happy to position still.
I mean, I guess in July, if we have to see an application for somebody set in and wants to interview, then you might have to take a different direction. Because it's just a few months and he could be walking out the door.
Yeah, January. Our goal is to get this person starting on September first. And so right now, like I said, it's early in the process. And this is pretty typical with any position we work, where you're looking at two weeks of actively recruiting, trying to get that person who meets the criteria we're looking for. This position is a challenging position. We've talked about this before. But at the same time, we're for the effort to, understanding that, right? So we're starting with what I always call is a narrow scope, and then we're going to broaden that scope as time goes on, depending on how things go.
And we thank you for all your work and just hope to accelerate, because as you see, we're trying to get things done. So hopefully you'll be able to help us out, you know? And we look forward to seeing you in July with a lot of others.
Yeah, and my hope is to have a resume for you here over the next two weeks. Or two, or three. It's unpredictable and people themselves are unpredictable, but that's our goal. I've had this conversation with our recruiting team about the challenges of this position and everything that goes with it. So they understand that there is some urgency here. We want to make sure that we help you find this right person. And at the same time, if you guys find this person, great.
Thanks.
Are you staying for our next meeting?
Which.
Well, this is a joint meeting. We're having a council.
I mean, I can.
The city can get back with it. Jim's gonna talk about the position of what the council wants you to hire, actually hire.
It's some good information for you in the next ten minutes.
Well, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you. What's the gal's name? Has that information been shared with everybody here, board and council, or just the council?
She sent her information.
So this will be on the July meeting?
Yes.
I guess she's the only one that's hired any government employees from the rest of the app. So I guess to me, that's the only person that I would care to deal with on the utility side.
Yes, that's fine. We'll get it off July.
Okay, I was gonna say, we can just do it now and be done with the situation for the utility side. We don't need to talk about it. What emotion on now, that's fine, I don't care.
You're talking about future hires.
Well, yeah, if Pat needs somebody, then he's got somebody to call right away. We don't have to talk about it anymore. It's on the city side, we don't need to deal with it.
He's just talking about having the board approve, repeat it.
It'll be done. You guys, you really act you want. And then if Pat needs somebody, there's none.
We will reevaluate our sign in July.
I'm asking if you guys feel comfortable doing that or not. And if you don't, you want to do it in July. It's hard, it's a four being, we've had to discuss this and, and we, you know? That's all.
And on the agenda. We don't really have to do anything until we have an opening, do we?
Um, he had how many months? I mean, you were looking for somebody for quite a while, right?
I mean, you can't recruit anybody actually.
Correct, but he wouldn't be waiting for a utility board meeting to have a contact either. It would be somebody in his back pocket, kind of like that maintenance person on the winter.
Okay, I was looking at, as soon as we had an opening, I mean, we could call this gal and we could.
Not in the utility board meeting, and if he's waiting for somebody, that's awesome.
Well, why don't you plan on July, a joint meeting, July?
Okay.
Okay, four council chambers upgraded.
This is the new camera, they're looking on it. Just have a change of order, unfortunately. If you like to just move that change order so they get it to a done. This is a new camera and it's.
And the changes, you want to explain the changes? Cause I was here.
So they ran into a little roadblock connecting the microphone to the camera. So now we have camera, but we have no sound. So just change orders for the piece to put the sound in there.
Now, was that because they determined our equipment is faulty and they thought it was working or?
Craig, I didn't really know what they said.
Okay.
They just said they need this piece to make it work.
Just curious if it's more they didn't realize there was a compatibility issue and now we're approving a change order.
And your intent on that, you mean?
They said that they were not going to charge any labor. This is just for the park.
Yeah, and that's probably not uncommon. I mean, we have change orders out at Ballmwood for stuff, you know? I mean, if we sat there and went, oh no, you know, it's changed, you know? So I mean, this is where a little part for a thing to make it so people can watch this, which was the intent to have the camera. I will make the motion to.
Second, how do you vote? Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Cabo?
Yes.
Morgan?
Sherman?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Felden?
Yeah.
AB, yes.
Is there anything else before adjourned this meeting? Why did it break?
Can we adjourn the utilities?
You require a jar for vacuum manual fire, gate fire. This is your line.
It's all scarce.
Call this made order, the council tentative agenda Monday, June 9, 2025, 16, 10, 10. Called or ordered.
He's just.
Russell?
Here.
Dolly?
Here.
Cabo?
Here.
Morgan?
Here.
Patrick? Agenda approval, consented agenda approvals in the minutes of 5:12, 2025. Approval of financial statements as of 5:31, 2025. Approval of bills as presented. Approved license, John A. Strubus, Capo, Peter Graves. Motion. Second?
Second.
How do you vote? Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Cabo?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, for Dare County landfill recycle bin service feedback. Bob?
Thank you. We, my brother and I went down to the Dare County transfer station board meeting last month and with the letter you guys provided as well to get them to stay open on the Saturday, the last Saturday in April to accommodate our schedule for town cleanup. And made a motion, you managed to vote to approve that for 2026 and into the foreseeable future. So we got what we wanted there. So the first, I'm here for two things. First thing, I'd like to have the council, if they would, vote to approve the dates of April 24th and 25th for next 2026 for town cleanup, because Molly's putting together her calendar for the FFA chapter members right now. And I want to be able to confirm to her if that's possible.
Move by Cabo.
Second? Second. How do you vote? Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Cabo?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
The second thing wasn't so pleasant down there. And I, this was Jim Henderson about this already. The street recycle bins are not a thing of beauty when they're picking them up. And if any of you use them, you would understand that. Jim is the Lone Ranger trying to do what he can do to make sure things work right. People dump stuff up there on the ground. If we have video, he's making sure that stuff gets back to the property. Long-term, that may not be enough bite to get people to do the right thing. If you use the mixed paper thing, you'll find that invariably people film their, put in their cardboard boxes. They don't have enough energy to break the box down and put it in proper place. They must be a lot older than I am. And we just got pretty negative feedback that it's as bad as it is in the county. And so I'm here, I talked with Jim about this. I think if nothing else, there should be an educational program under the city's name. I would gladly write something up and have approval by Ash and Jim and my brother, whoever. But number one, to let all residents know, and it would be like maybe in the newspaper article, maybe on the sort of hometown page, on the city's website of our bins and how they're to be used. There's people moving here all the time, they're unaware of them. We met them at the cleanup. They don't know about those till they come here. Secondly, it is, they're kind of going into detail what the problems have been. And I'm just voluntary, somebody else can take that on. But it needs to be done because the second guy down there was more vociferous. He's just, you know, those things might not be there long-term if they're too much trouble. And we'd hate to see that. But, and it's probably, as Jim said earlier, a few bad apples make it difficult for everybody. But I think a reminder of why they're there, how they're to be used, and maybe some feedback on what the transfer station sees as problems that need to be eliminated or minimized, I guess. So I just wanted to provide that to council. Thank you guys.
And I want to add to that is there is a lot of cardboard that AB is picking up, is not getting recycled, which that costs the city. Jim said he pulled out a lot of plastic out of the recycle bin. There's styrofoam in those bins. And then around town, you're supposed to have two thirty-three gallon garbage sacks. People are putting their loose garbage in the cans and AB's having to lift the whole can up, dump in there. That shouldn't happen. And Jim says if enough trash gets in the recycle, it just goes to landfill and the city gets charged for it. So hopefully Bob can write up something and maybe we can put something in the city bills to remind people. Thank you. Okay, five, street fleet department school resource office program, AB.
Okay, did everybody get a chance to review the stuff that I put in the package?
Yeah.
I guess we have a little bit to go over, but the number one, the SRO contract. We discovered, having a conversation with the school, that there was one paragraph that kept the contract open for five years, one that kept it open for one year. So we needed to kind of fix that moving forward. Also, obviously with the SRO's benefits and salary going up four percent, we wanted to make sure that we included that into the fact, into this new contract. So the new contract has a four percent increase for the benefits and the salary. And then it also fixes that paragraph. So this would be, as long as the school, school board agrees with it, it would be a five-year contract. We would have to re-discuss the budget every year, but not the terms of the contract. So we could sign it, and you know, tonight, they signed it and then it lasted five years. We wouldn't have to discuss it unless there's some changes. And obviously, there's clauses in there for, you know, how people can pull out if they want to and things like that. Any questions on the contract?
Did we mean that to be five years last year?
We meant to.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, and we were all thinking it was. And then we were actually in a meeting with Rusty and Samantha walked in and said, hey, this paragraph only has one year. And we're like, what? So we went and looked at it, sure enough, one paragraph at one year, one paragraph at five years. So we just wanted to fix that so that it's good to go, obviously, with those changes. So that's kind of number one on the list. And then obviously, the second one, we talked last year when we did this. I think it might have been Mr. Cabo that brought it up, but we talked about filling this with part-time positions. And we kind of agreed to do that over the year, to give it a try, see how it's gonna work, and then kind of revisit in a year. I think anybody that knows a lot about the program would know that it's definitely working out. It's beneficial, it's doing a lot of great things. But it is extremely hard for us to find part-time work to cover it. So essentially, the only way that we've been able to get this program through the year is having our own officers work overtime and cover those shifts, which just isn't sustainable for the future. So with the agreement that we have with the school, you know, they provide, this four percent increase, they'd be providing seventy thousand three oh six, which would cover the majority of full-time officer's position and benefits. Now, depending on how much the benefits would cost, there might be a little bit of an overage that the city would need to, you know, come up with. Or like I put in the package, the other option is we can apply for COGS grant. It's a new position if we hire this fit full-time position. So the COGS grant would also be usable for a portion of that. And if we were able to get the COGS grant, then we would actually, it would fully fund itself. The program, we wouldn't need any sort of contribution from the city. So the downside though, with that COGS grant, is the application is due the end of this month, the 25th. There's actually two steps to it. One, I believe it was the 25th, and then one's July 1st. And I have to have the ability to be authorized to hire that position before I can apply for the grant. So that's why I'm asking, you know, tonight for that, or that's why I gave this proposal, because if I wait any longer, if I wait until the next meeting, I won't be able to apply for that grant. And we'd be stuck with just the first option. We wouldn't be able to apply for the COGS grant. Then we could do it next year. Also, unfortunately, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the COGS grant. We did use it, we used it to hire one of our existing officers. So for a long time, the way it worked is it was a four-year program. You would get essentially the full salary the first year, seventy-five percent the next year, and it went down in a step. They've changed that. So now it is up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand for the duration of the program. That includes all the years. And they only will do it for three years. You have to promise to keep the officer on a fourth year. So if you do the math, it comes up to like forty-one six that the city, or that the federal government will give us per year to cover a new officer position. They're basing that on a federal standard of entry-level police officer at fifty-five thousand. If you take out their seventy-five percent, it'd be forty-one six. So we can apply up to that forty-one six a year for the first three years, but we can't apply for any more than that. That's where their cutoff is. We could obviously, the city could have a higher contribution above that, but that's all we get back from the COGS grant. So that kind of, that kind of covers the first two issues. I don't know if you have any questions, concerns, thoughts? I would love to discuss it. Or if you guys have any questions, Rusty, he's here. He did not want me to say that, but. So just to kind of reiterate, the, the plan right now is working off of the reimbursement that the school gives us. We pay the overtime costs out of that. So all we're asking to change, we already have this, this technically this position working for the city. We're just asking for that to go from a part-time position to a full-time position. If we, so we don't have to worry about hiring part-time employment to, to come in and work the shifts. We have someone that can cover the shifts. Again, the funding would come out of the, you know, reimbursement from the school district and as well as the, the COGS grant if we're able to get it. And hopefully if we can get the COGS grant, we wouldn't have to, I mean, we would have enough to cover the whole program.
For three years.
For three years, yes. After four, on the fourth year, we would have to find a different funding source for that 41/6. So I talked to Chip about it, actually today, he was saying that, you know, he thinks it's a good first start to, to some of these other issues that we're trying to work through. Because it's, it's a lot harder to find additional funding for salaries and benefits. That's usually the hardest thing to, to, you know, you have to do tax increases, things like that. So if we can find a way to cover the, the salary, the benefits for this position, it's going to be a lot easier to find later down the road funding for equipment or vehicles or the other needs that we may have. So it, it kind of, in, in a lot of senses, it, it fixes a lot of things all within this one, you know, program. What are your thoughts? Ash, one?
I have one. I don't have anything to do with this. So I'm going to, we, we just made that to call, like you, you in the back.
When did you realize that just utilizing the part-timers really wasn't working out?
I mean, it's, it's, I, and this is not really a good, easy answer for that. I mean, it kind of depends on the situation.
Because it just seems like we're kind of up against the wall here. You know, if we don't say, yeah, you can hire this, then, you know, you would make it work with the part-timer, right? Or try to?
Well, we would try to, absolutely.
Right.
As we've, as we've been trying to. I mean, the, the better, I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but I mean, the two officers that work the majority of those shifts are here. You know, I mean, I would have no problem with them answering that question because they're the ones that have put the work into it, you know, the majority of those hours. But, you know, I think it's not, like you said, it's not something that, you know, we would, we would definitely continue to try to do this, but I just can't guarantee it.
It has kind of been a known thing. I wouldn't think it would have been a known, you know, that, you know, maybe they're getting a little burned out or something prior to like, now we're up against the wall with the COGS, the COGS grant, you know? Because that's a great idea, you know?
Sure.
That's, that's, that's great supplement, I know. In case none of you know, was it five years ago, four years ago? We were kind of in the situation like we're in now.
Uh, yes.
And, and we kind of threw $40,000 towards this to, to make everything work.
Yeah.
And we're kind of in the same situation where we're at now, you know, with, with everything, you know? Not just this, the resource officers, that's a separate thing, but you know, looking at staffing and retention and stuff. And, and now we're still in the same spot, you know? And we, we really put on the spot, you know, to make a, a decision because we had people threatening to leave. And this, you know, we opened the packet and I don't know if anybody else read it. We have people threatening to leave again, you know? And I just, I, I hope we don't think that just throwing money at this will cure this, you know? And, and again, I hate having my back against the wall. We had this with Mike Morgan, you know, where, hey, we gotta do something right now or this is going to go away. And I think a lot of this stems from this kind of a systemic breakdown of there's no real communication. I think, I, I, I have to believe that this was known prior to tonight, prior to the last few months, you know? And there's, if, if you don't have the resource with your management that knows budget, you're going to come in and you're going to talk to the council about it. And we can't make decisions on budget because this is all pretty much one side. It's from the police. You haven't taken any other department into consideration, possible changes at the state level, stuff like that, you know? Let tax levy increase, that's, that's not in here. That's, that is all budgetary that goes to the action. If that had been run through you, we might be able to resolve this without having to have this discussion. Like it's almost like one-on-one with the council. We're trying to say, here, and make a decision without knowing real numbers.
You just could state that you, you know, it worked.
So I just.
It was like, cool.
Why, why is that? Why, why is it we have all the department heads besides just the police that report to city administrator? I know it's been that way for a long time. Why, why is that? If I could, if I could address some of the things that he said earlier, but this isn't new information. I brought this up. Dick was with me before we even talked about budgets with Ash. I bring Dick with me in every meeting for that reason. I've discussed openly with the council and with Ash specifically, ever since I became chief, that these funding issues were going to continue to become bigger and bigger problems. I have, that is no secret to anybody. Literally last time we, you, you referenced, last time we brought this up. One of the articles that was brought up, that was shown to me was an interview I did with Stuart Harold the day I took over as chief. And one of the, the first things I said is we need to address the equipment issues, the training issues, the salary issues. Anybody that knows me knows that this is something I'm not quiet about. I don't hide it. I don't try to sneak in at the very last minute to do this. This has been an ongoing problem for 25 years before I took over as chief. So there's two issues at bay. And I, and again, the officers are here. I would love for them to give their input so that you guys could hear it. I don't think that their, their issue is the SRO program. That wasn't the issue that, that led to any of the other things that you're talking about.
It's separate.
So there's two different issues here that we really need to discuss. The SRO contract to be continued is one. The only reason that, that I'm, you know, obviously we're, I don't like to put you in this sort of timeline, but I, they kind of operate off the same fiscal year. So the application's good at the end. If we're going to apply for this, we have to do it, you know, obviously now. This wasn't an issue that was discussed when we were talking about this before. It is now. That's the only way that I can explain it to you, but it's not in a sense to try to, to, you know, cram this in or try to force you into making a decision. That is the last thing I want. I also didn't realize that I was going to have, you know, two officers give me notice this month. That's something new to me. I also didn't know that I was going to have these other issues to deal with. So, you know, a lot of this is connected, but not connected. And unfortunately, the stuff that is connected led me to where I'm at right now. So.
I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is, is I get, you know, and, and I've been here not as long as some people, but I've been here, and I know you've brought up issues in front of the council. But not, not having a supervisor that understands a budget, I mean, you go to Dick and talk about budget and get that figured out, or actually sitting down on a day-to-day basis and having your, your day-to-day, the day-to-day knowledge with the person that works the budget. Seems like that would be a more appropriate way to address this than he knows what's going on. He can talk to you about this and you come up and you say, hey, you know, six months earlier, we're kind of getting burned out with these part-time things. We need to sit down and, and work it. Telling it to us here, we're volunteers. We're not going to sit around the dinner table and figure out a budget. Sure. You know, we're, that's not our job. That's sure Ash's job.
Yeah.
And that would be yours to communicate to him. And, and they brought it up too, you know? It's like, if, if you're not reporting there, there's, you don't, you don't have accountability to Ash. You know, he can't call you in and they'll go over this, you know? And if that structure was there, then maybe we heard about this two months ago, three months ago, whatever, and we're able to make a decision. We got the definite numbers. It's been taken, looked at holistically, and I mean, that means the whole city. Instead of just saying, hey, you know, we need fifth officer, we can hopefully do this, you know? Can take a look at where we can get the money from in the future. If we don't get it, you know, can we meet, can we meet these numbers that you have in here?
So I'm confused about two different things because the SRO program, if we were to get the COGS grant and with the funding reimbursement from the school, this would literally cost nothing.
That's if, right?
If, if we did get the COGS grant, then there would be a small cost to the city.
For three years.
For three years.
Right, sure. So then we got, we got future, see, that's what I'm saying.
Absolutely.
Is this is where, unless you and Dick have got it figured out, past three years.
So again, I'll go back to this again and, and there's a reason that I bring Dick with me to those meetings. And I didn't bring it today because I didn't know that you were going to bring it up. But I have all of my budgets that I've turned into the, to Ash that I've asked for. And this includes all of that. I get, I get declined every year. I get told no on those increases that I request, like a lot of other city leaders do. And then when we come to a budget workshop meeting where you guys are all told, no, everything's fine. They agree. Well, we didn't necessarily agree. We got told that any of these, that any of these increases that we needed were going to be given to us. So I have no option but to bring it to you. That's my only choice. I've, I've tried to have that conversation. So again, I don't think that that's a fair assessment of, of, you know, how this is going. The SRO contract is one thing. If we want to talk about the, the, the funding for equipment, training, all of those things, you know? Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounds, it sounds to me like you're basically saying, if you knew how to budget better, or if you were more willing to talk to Ash about the budget, we would have figured out these problems existed for a long time. If you, you saw the, the packet, I would hope that you read through it. And I would hope that you went through the line item budget I gave you. Also the attachment A that I sent, which is what I'm giving to the city. If you take out our fuel, if you take out the things that we use in an average year, we're over budget before we can start. And I brought this up for years, for years. So it's not me that hasn't brought it to attention. It's not me that had said, oh yeah, I think we can just keep going the way we're going. I have said every single year, we do not have enough money in our budget to pay the bills that we need to pay.
So. How you remember?
Yeah.
So I did look at one and I was hoping not to get too far into weeds in there, but I was looking at one. There was, I can't remember if age was on, and Ash can help me out, where there was an actual surplus in the budget, about $4,800. And then it stated that that's not enough to cover police cars and all that. Is that right? It stated that in there.
I don't know.
Yes, I couldn't remember. How many?
For which, which?
It's the one that you had your spreadsheet on.
You have the rating cost on budgets. You have indicated currently 89.46% on wage aid. Currently 89.46% of the development, the bulk of the budget is allocated to full-time salaries. When you add essential recording expenses like fuel, 15,000 vehicle, the repair, 7,000, uniform, 3,000, maintenance and office supplies, 3,500. A total of 9.5% of the budget is immediately spent. That leaves 4,729 per year for about $394 per month for everything else. This small reminder must cover all other rating costs. Then you went on and said, this leaves virtually no funding for critical items like vehicles and equipment.
Sure.
So you're saying that you have $4,700?
No, that you're, you're taking that completely out of context. What I'm saying is this, these are the line items that you report that I'm supposed to have to spend. Those, that 15,000, all those things are our actual costs, things that it actually costs me to do this job. So for instance, with fuel, if you really, I mean, we could, we could have a whole meeting about this. We could calculate for a dollar, you know, exactly how much we spend. But if you were just to look at an average cost of, you know, nine, 900 to a thousand dollars in fuel, okay? So $12,000 in fuel, where is that on this line? Show me. Where does it say fuel, $12,000?
I'm reading what you wrote.
No, 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 you're not. You're reading one side of what I wrote. You're not reading the numbers that are right next to it. Where does it say on here that I have $12,000 for fuel?
Yeah, but that's not a surplus.
And I'll actually, I'll show you. The attachment A, which is the, the documents that you provide me, where on there does it say $12,000 for fuel?
I think we can single my.
Exactly.
And that's what I did want to do, but you know, I, so this is unclear to me of, you know, because it currently the budget that made a central, right? So. The, and then when you say it leaves 47.29 per year.
Cover those other.
I, I'm, you're not, you're not speaking, okay? Thank you though. You don't need to. So, and it says, uh, to cover other operating costs, to cover the cell phones and stuff like that. That's what that says.
Those are discomforts. Sure, those are examples. I'm not, nowhere in there am I saying that's, that's exactly what we're going for.
Right, but, but, and I'm trying to get to that. But actually, we don't ask you to cover a lot of that stuff out of the budget. It comes from capital expenses, right? It comes from another area.
No, the, the number that I'm given, the number that I'm given is attachment A on the backside of that, okay? So you, you brought up at the beginning of this, a communication issue, right? So that communication issue, when I go to, when I go to our city manager and say, this is what I'm going to need next year to spend for all of these things.
When you say all, you're talking the, uh, the thick goals and everything like that?
Anything and everything that we would, we would possibly.
All right.
Now I understand right now, currently, we don't have a vehicle rotation. So yeah, there's no money budgeted to that. So if I wanted to buy a vehicle right now in the current setup, I'd have to come to you guys or I'd have to go to Ash and say, Ash, we need a vehicle. We'd come up with some sort of plan to, to, you know, take it out of a different, you know, account or we would raise taxes or we'd do whatever we need to do. My operating budget is all I can be in charge of. I'm not paid to do the, the budget for the city. I can only do what I was given. This, that attachment A is what I've provided every single month to do my math to figure out what I need to spend or what I have to spend. So if there's money hidden in some secret account, that's never been told to me. It's never been discussed. And I've been in Ash's office three or four times a year talking about this stuff at a minimum. So at what point was it brought up that, oh, well, no, no, fuel comes out of this other town? Never. And, and if, we've, we've had these conversations. I mean, Dick can speak for me. He's been in these meetings with me. So my point with that, with that diagram that you're looking at is that is, that is the number of, of line items. Those are the line items in the, the dollar amount that I'm told at the beginning of the year I have to spend on things. Okay? Also, these are the same line items that I write down when a bill comes to me for fuel. These are the same line items that I'm taking them out of. Not some capital account, not some other hidden secret account. I'm literally writing these, these codes down on my, on the bill sheet saying, this is where the fuel needs to come out of. The fuel doesn't have enough money in those line items to come out of that line item. But I have to do it that way because that's the way I've been instructed to do it since the beginning of this. So my point is, and, and again, I, I will be the first to admit, I'm not a budget, budget expert. I didn't go to school for, for mathematics, anything like that. But it's pretty easy to do simple math, simple addition, subtraction. If you give me X and it costs me Y to do it, and that Y is bigger than the X, we're going to be over budget. And that's a simple, that's, that's where we found ourselves for years and years and years. Furthermore, if you, if you went through and looked at the comparisons, we are one of the only cities out of that comparison that is doing it the way we're doing it. Go to, I, I encourage every one of you, go to the department of management website, look at every single city that required to provide this stuff. It's public record. You go to every single city and you look at their increase in funding for all their departments. This isn't just a police issue. You go look at their, their, their increases in streets department, fire department, rescue. Every one of them is like this. Stewart's is like this. It's been that way for 20 years.
Is that true, Ash? Have we not increased the?
No, no, I'm not saying, I didn't say why. It's like this.
Okay, so let's, let's stay here because you said it's like that.
Like that.
And I have showed this information out of the department of management.
Sure.
This information, kind of, out of the department of management. In year 2004, I'm going to give you just an example of three years. 2002, your budget is 417,000. 2023, your budget is 454,000. 2004, your budget is 481,000. That doesn't even include what you are talking about of that hearing thing in the department of management. That hidden thing is still showing here. Where how much it cost us to bear your vehicles and everything else, which is you have three issues. You have a police car, you just bought, cost us 80,000 with accelerated fuel. We have $400,000 we issued. We have four hundred thousand dollars we issued, we still taxpayers paying for. You have a building right here, that was constructed through library, grease, and city hall. We bear almost around three hundred thousand dollars here. You have one shift. So the taxpayers are paying for all these things, and on the development management, it's highlighted like that. We just need to continually what's on the development management.
I'm not saying anything that you're not saying, Ash. I don't know what you're trying to say.
And I'm not doubting you. You're doing an awesome job. And I feel it means that in my office and here, it's just a matter of the lack.
You're saying I'm doing an officer job, but then you turn around and say that I don't know how to do math, simple math.
No, I didn't say that either, but I said, we have to evolve in a certain way.
Sure.
It's all evolved. It's all in the same way.
And nowhere have I said in any of these, these things that I've provided, that you're not giving us any increase, or that you're not giving us the budget. What I'm saying is, the budget is not adequate to cover the costs associated with what we need to do. And the, and the way that I broke that down, in my mind, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I, maybe I see things differently. But the way that I, the way that I see this being the easiest way to look at is you, because you can compare Des Moines and say, well, yeah, they have so much more money, more residents, more citizens, all that stuff. I agree, that's a tough comparison. But what you can do is, you can say, how much percentage of each citizen's taxes go to the police department in Des Moines? How much of the exact, of the percentage of the tax money for a citizen in Adair goes to the police department? How many, you know, whatever, you can compare every city this way. And it's a fair comparison because regardless of how many people they have living there, regardless of how big their budget is, you can at least come down and say, each citizen pays X amount to the police department to fund it. And, and what we discovered in that comparison is we're not just below average, we are severely below average on that, that rate. Now, I'm not saying that's the only rate to game, so that's the only way to look at this. I provided that information because that's the information I have available. And it makes sense. It's a logical, it's a logical thing.
One thing that gets it easy, really. I think you're doing a good job. I'm even a little down with what you're saying. It's just the idea, you just said you saw me throughout the whole year two, three times. If I did, how many times have I seen all the development heads, your piece of work?
But I'm only supposed to talk to you about budgetation.
And that's, that's what I'm saying. You talk to me about budget issue every day. We meet with development heads every day, day to day operation. Maybe that's a lack of communications was created. You know, maybe your line needs to meet every day. Why not? I meet with Jim twice a day.
Sure.
Why not?
And I'm not.
You tell me, do you have opposition to that?
No, I don't have opposition to that, but what I, what I will say is, it's not gonna change these, these figures.
Why?
The figures are the same. If I met with you in January and you requested me to turn in a budget, and the budget that I turned in, you said, no, I can't give that to you. Well, we're gonna have the same conversation the next day, next night.
Why you say no? I give you more.
No, but I.
I give you six percent of what you asked.
You're putting words in my mouth. I didn't, I came to you with a budget that was going to cover the costs of the things that we needed to cover. And you said that wasn't gonna happen. I'm not saying you did that personally, or any reason, you had your reasons, but if that's where this stops, if that, if you were the person, this is a pick, that's it, that's over, no more conversation, and I can't bring it to the council, then this department will never function.
But you get more than what you asked for. You get six percent increase.
Not more than I asked for. I didn't ask for a six percent increase.
No, you, what you asked for, we gave you six percent increase.
Six percent of what I asked for.
But like I said, we can still all might talk about these things, which we should talk about it in my office. You're not.
It's not gonna change the fact that.
You need more talking. Do you have issues with that?
No.
Okay, this is very what we're coming down to. Most of the development heads, they don't come to this point there because we talk daily about your need. I don't have that leverage with you. And it's not your fault, and it's not mine, but it's just what the city code say.
Sure.
So it's leaving, say.
And I'm not here to argue that, but just like you just said, leverage. There shouldn't be leverage in any of this. I shouldn't have leverage on you. You shouldn't have leverage on me.
Dave, why honestly, according to the city code, I can't call you in my office every time, no. I have no supervision over you. You don't have to evolve to me.
All I'm simply trying to say is, if you look at comparisons, if you look at the information that we provided, I think it's very easy to see that we are severely underfunded compared to our peers. That's all I'm trying to say.
Don't we all, you know, if you ask any development, they all underfunded.
Honestly, I would agree. Here, sure.
We're living with an army because we have certain sources, we're strong down there.
Sure. And, and those comparisons that I provided are all small town.
Yes, but we make.
Some of them are just miles away from.
They make, we make it the most out of it. If I ask Jim now how old the cars he has, you probably tell you eighty-nine, ninety-nine. You have two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two.
Sure.
Two thousand twenty-five.
Sure.
And you are on a five-year rotation.
No, we're not. That's, that's.
Why not? Why not?
Because we've asked for it for years. We've never had anything officially.
We issued four hundred thousand to get you brand new cars. You got it. Last couple of months, you come and ask me for a brand new car, you got it. You asked me for body cameras, you got it. Just spent the ninety thousand dollars last month.
And you can document this. I've been asking for body cameras and car cameras for five or six years.
But you got it, David. You got it. We're making the most out of it.
After five years.
Driving, we're all trying to do it again.
Okay, and that's.
And you talk to me about vehicles. Please let me finish. I, I told you right in my office that we are on the five-year rotation, just made the last three now. And we're gonna get a lot of the money to me, but at next rotation. That's the only thing we had. What we argued about, there's no arguing.
I'm not here to argue. I've provided pretty logical explanations to all of this. I'm not making this personal at all.
And it's not personal.
I'm not the one that's saying, you did this, you did that, whatever. I'm just simply saying, and this is documented, I have proof to document this. I have been asking for increases to the budget since the day I took over. I'm sure so has, so have other department heads, and I'm not here to discuss that. The, the issue though is, is that here, there's a lineup here that we need to function, to operate as a department. We are not at that line. We could argue all day long about what that number should be. There's some people that might think it should be way up here. There might be some people that think it should be way down here. My job as the chief is to tell you all that I think that number's here. If you disagree with me on that, great. But that's the number I'm providing to you. And in my mind, if we don't get to that number, we will not be able to function as a police department. And that's evident if you talk to the officers. And again, I would have no problem with them speaking. I would actually prefer that they speak and explain to you their feelings on this, which is, because their feelings are not that they're being given enough to make do. There's, we don't have, we're lacking certain equipment that, that literally, I can't tell you another police department that don't have those, those items. We're lacking funds in, in ways that make zero sense. And I think that a lot of people in the community don't realize how severely underfunded we are. It, it's, it's to the point where it is, and to be honest, it's been this way for years and years and years, for twenty, thirty years. The only difference is, we were able to figure out a creative way to keep people happy long enough to stay here. We didn't fix any of the equipment, or the funding, or the training issues. We just found a really great group of officers that were willing to put up with the treatment they were getting. The difference before that was, the officers weren't willing to do that, and they were, they left every year. I literally, Katie gave me a letter that she found when she was doing some, some cleaning um, in the storage unit for, for the, the street, for the city cleanup days. And it is literally a letter from the late nineties. And it's literally a letter from the chief of police, and it mirrors exactly what I've been saying. That we will never have, we'll never retain officers if we don't have a certain level of, of training, equipment, salaries. It just never will happen. And if the city's okay with that, I'm not here to make your decision for you. I'm just here as, as a chief to stand up for my officers and give them the treatment that I feel they deserve, and to fix some of these issues. And in my opinion, I've been completely kept from doing that for years and years and years. We've never gotten to the level that we need to be. And it's not just me. I, I know a lot of times when we bring these issues up, people like to say, well, streets, rescue, and this, and you notice I don't bring up any of that. I never try to make it about me versus those departments, because honestly, in my opinion, from, from what I've looked at in their budgets, they're low too. And I don't have a problem saying that. There's a lot of departments in this city that don't get treated the way that they, that they should compared to other cities around us. Now, if you guys are okay with Stewart being that way, that's your choice. You're the councilmen. If you guys decide, you know what, we don't wanna fund our police department like Greenfield does, or just Fortisoto does, or Van Meter does, or Earlam does, or Quinora does, if that's your choice, I'm not here to change that. I can't. But what I'm here to say as a police chief, that's been the police chief here for longer than any other police chief ever has, in my opinion, you should be so proud of this department that you should be willing to say, look, we need to fund them at least, at least, at an average of what all those other cities are funding. And if not, at least average, at least better. Why not? You've got, you've got city employees like Jim that have been here forever. Why should there be an argument of, well, should we just give him enough, or should we give him what he deserves compared to all these other cities? So I'm not trying to make this about him, or me, or department or department. I'm just trying to simply say that you have a great group of officers here. There are, these are all hiring ads in the last year, okay? Every one of these is significantly higher starting salaries than ours. I don't make these numbers up. So if I've got people, employees, that have the ability to go other places, my goal as the chief, and I hope you'd want me to do this, would be to keep them here. And if they're coming to me saying, hey, I can make twenty, thirty thousand dollars somewhere else, oh, and by the way, they have better equipment, they have better cars, they have better schedules, they get paid overtime? What am I supposed to do? I mean, I, I'm seriously asking you guys, what am I supposed to do as the chief to keep people employed here? If I have, this is Atlantic, not too far away, Atlantic PD. After probation, for a basic starting officer, sixty-one-six, okay? Our five-year officers that are currently working here make fifty-five. After that four hundred thousand dollar increase, after all the stuff we had to fight for, they're making fifty-five thousand. Not only is Atlantic giving sixty-one-six after probation for starting, they're offering a seventy-five hundred dollar sign-on bonus right now.
Wasn't that your proposal, Dave, when he came and we have four hundred thousand loan, and he gave us a proposal and told us how much we should pay every one officer?
That was, that was never intended, and no one ever said that that was the way that we were gonna do it forever. Obviously, these things have to go up. I can't. With the cost of living increase, with inflation, things cost more.
I respect, I respect that, but that we went with you proposed.
Five years ago. And you haven't heard from me since.
Okay, now we're hearing from you, but that doesn't mean we've done anything wrong. We went with what you told us.
Am I, no, that's, what I'm saying is.
Between the meeting.
What I'm, yeah, at that meeting, sure. But in, in between that five years, between that, that meeting and this meeting, there's been multiple meetings in your office with Dick there where I've said I need for.
You give us a fine increase that we follow, except he hasn't told us.
And again, I'm not here to argue the numbers. What I'm trying to say is, if you look at it on an average, and if anybody doesn't agree with this, go look at it. It's all public information.
We believe you. I believe you. I don't have a box.
So the city of, the city of Adair can, can afford to pay their department not only a better salary, but a better wage. The city of, of, you know, Earlam, all these different towns, those, those cities can all do this. And if, again, if you go back to the department management, what I was trying to explain, and I'm not saying it's a flat line, what I'm saying is Stewart is here. We're a gradual climb. We are going up every year, and everywhere else is going up higher. And it's not just that one particular city. It's all of those cities, because the costs needed to increase the ability to do what we do, they have to be at a higher level. We're getting the bare minimum. Every year, we get the bare minimum. I mean, how many years since I've been here have you said we're gonna go with a four percent increase? Because that's what we always do. That's the number that we choose. That's the, that's just what we're gonna do.
You're lucky for gift.
Sure, and I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that. But my point is, as a city manager, you've said, we're gonna give them a four percent increase because that's what we've always done, four percent increase. Now, if inflation that year went up fifteen percent, and the next year went up ten percent, and the next year went up eight percent, and the next year went up six percent, how does that four percent increase every year keep us where we need to be? Now, if you look at those other cities, what they did is they go four percent, four percent, four percent, four percent, four percent. They went up more, you know, closely to resemble the, the cost of inflation and different things.
But the focus it was the wages. You went eight percent, when you six percent.
Our biggest, our biggest increase was when we had that, that meeting back in, you know, whenever that was, twenty twenty. Um, and, and to be fair, if we all remember, that whole, that conversation was much different than it is now. We had two officers when we were having that conversation. So we were struggling immensely. There, I've said it before, I'll say it again, there's been times where I've literally been the only officer in this town for months.
I respect your mistake, and I hope you don't see that we're here to challenge.
Here, here's my point. And again, I'm not trying to.
But I wanna ask you one last question, and then I'll no further.
Okay.
Do you have issues dealing with me on a day-to-day operation?
No.
You don't?
No.
I just wanna hear it from you.
I, I would, I would be the first to say though, you and me disagree on the, on the way that our budget should be handled. And I'll, I mean, you're asking my opinion, I'll give it to you. I feel that I have, over the years, asked you for increases that were fair. I'm not asking for helicopters. I'm not asking for things we don't need. I'm literally asking for things that I know we need just to, just to continue to operate, like, for instance, fuel for our vehicles. And I feel, again, just my opinion, I just, I feel that I have not gotten what we've needed.
Which is why, I guess I wanna make a point to you that, the, the ways that I run the development, the development heads, and we all here seems like it's working better than the way you and I communicate because of the code, the city code. Just hear me out, and we'll get to a certain point that I'm trying to establish. It's improved on the level of having to deal with the development heads day to day, having the ability to pull the development head and ask him to come so we can discuss each issue on a day-to-day operation. I don't have that level with you. I don't, it's not your fault. It's not mine. It just twenty-five years ago.
I have to respectfully stop you, because I, like, I could pull out my work phone right now, okay? And I would do this, literally, right now. My work phone, I've had for eight years, okay? I guarantee you right now, without even looking at it, if I pulled it out right now, typed in your number, and saw the last time you called me, it didn't exist. It wouldn't be in it.
Because the city code say I have nothing to do with you.
Okay, but what I'm saying is, if you're saying we need to have this close relationship, I can document plenty of times where I've come over and talked to you, and I've asked for things. There's also times where I've invited you to come talk to me over there for things.
You're always available.
Never happened.
When I need.
How many times have you been in my office since I've been in the police?
The city code say I have nothing to do with you.
Exactly. The city code says.
On his toe, if I just come to you.
The city code says, I don't respond to you either, yet I've been in your office many, many times.
Because you have to give me the budget. That's the only time we do.
As the police chief, I've been here for fifteen, sixteen years, whatever. How many times have you been in my office? Just answer one question.
Because I cannot stand on the mayor's floor. We're not here to challenge. We're here to establish a way.
But you're trying to say that I don't meet with you, and that's false.
It's not your fault. It's what the city code say, and that answered his question. He asked a question half an hour ago, and we didn't give him the answer. The answer is, the city code say I have nothing to do with the police.
That's, that's, that's a fine.
I have no idea, you tell me.
That's, that's actually not.
You still took the power away from you, one of the police.
Why?
Huh?
Why?
You tell me.
You tell me.
Okay.
I didn't know that.
I'm gonna say one thing, because I don't, yeah, I'm trying to keep this.
You're bringing it up. You tell me why.
I'm trying to keep this room from getting.
My personal matter.
But.
That's why you're losing the way you're asking.
So, I, just.
That's enough, buddy.
Just, just real quick, just real quick, just real quick. What I, what I will say, because I think this is a fair assessment, what you're saying that you don't have any responsibility to police department, that's false. You still have a budgetary involved in a third apartment, right? So you, you're not my boss. You can't necessarily tell me to do one thing or other. That's Dick's job, right? By code. I agree with you on that. However, we've had conversations, and honestly, there's five minutes that you can pull up, because I remember having these conversations in meetings where we have agreed to meet and talk about budgets, which we do. Are you sitting here right now saying I don't meet with you on budget?
To use you if funding.
That's all I'm asking. So, my point is, I do meet with you. Under your guidelines for budgetary reasons, things like that, I call you if I have questions of budgetary. I don't call Dick and say, hey, Dick, I need money for a truck. I call you.
Yes.
And I've done that since I've started. How many times have you reached out to me about any of those other things?
I wanted to be deal, because that's what I do as a development. And how often Jim in my office?
Sure.
Daily.
Sure.
How often he comes to me with the issue that he wants to do daily?
But you're his boss.
That was a problem.
So, I don't believe that.
That we have no connection, and it's not your fault, it's not mine, it's what the city code say. Don't ask me why the city could say, because the mayor doesn't know. I don't know.
Either. I think we're getting, we're getting some on some other.
We need to start it here, because this is where we at. We have no communication.
I don't agree with that.
When is this, when is this grant due? When you have that for,
So there's two, there's two steps to it. So, the first one, I believe, is the twenty-fifth of June, we have to have the initial application.
How long will it take you to fill out that application?
Days. I mean, if I have the right information, it will take me literally days to, to fill out. It is a lengthy application, but it's not something that's going to take years, you know? Really, the reason that I needed to bring this up to the council, the whole goal here, is that I have to have authorization to apply for that grant. Because the grant is requesting, so there's some, there's some rules to the grant that you can only use it for certain things. One of those rules would be new position. There, now there are some things that this current administration has added to, that, that help approve the grant, like local, it's going to a rule department, great, or a rule department. There's some language in there about, we're going to approve it if it goes towards school safety, great. This would go to cover the, the shifts, so we can have an SRO program. So, I think we'll have a very good chance of getting this. But the debt, they, they've switched how they do it. It doesn't, it's not administered through the same process. It used to be one application, turn it in, go, be done. This one now, there's a two-step, the first one's twenty-fifth, then the first. And then they, they have a result by, I think it was November, or, sorry, September twenty-fifth, something in there. They would have a, a number where they could say, yep, we have it, or yes, you did it, you don't get it. So, I mean, if you guys gave me permission, I could do it tomorrow. But, well, not tomorrow, but at least by the end of the week. But my, my point is, I'm requesting funding for a position that doesn't exist.
I understand.
And so I can't do that. I have to request funding for a position that doesn't exist.
Yeah.
Or that's a new position. I think that this whole thing right now, with just the timing and everything, how our code is written, which I, I would love to see the code changed. I don't know how we would go about doing that, because I, I think that how it is going right now is not working. But, yeah, I think that if you reported to Ash, it'd be a lot easier to work with Chip on some of these financial things. And then we could get, I don't know, creative, but Chip's a genius, Ash can work with the budget. We could get a lot more of these things hashed out, in my opinion, again, that's, that's my opinion. And if you guys all sat together, you could start working on this. If you guys all sat together, and we meet here two weeks on the twenty-third, I know that's only two days from the deadline, but you could get it started in the head of time. And if we so choose to go down that line, or down this path, I just, I think it's unfair, the position you're in right now. I think it's unfair the position Ash is in right now, and it's unfair for our city council right now, because we got this on Friday, here we are trying to make a decision. That's a big decision, especially when we're trying to pinch pennies with, I mean, again, we use this legislature, we don't know what we don't know. But I think that our levies bound to go up this coming year. I think that we would, it would just be great, like we talked about at our last meeting, if we got Chip together, run some numbers, figure out what can we do, what can we not do, how much can we do. I would feel more comfortable. I just hate saying, hey, let's, let's just do this. I, I think we should do it, but I hate to know long-term effects. I get we're out of money, we only have so much money.
Sure.
So can we do it? I don't know. I don't know right now with who they knows, if Bash knows, I don't know what Chip would say, I just don't know. And that's not, in my opinion, that's not our job to know every single line item, the jobs do, what Jim does, with everything. So, it would be nice to have someone just say, hey, this is a great way we can do this, we have, we can budget it, Chip works on it, whatever it might be, and then we can have a conversation. I just don't know enough. I would love to say, yes, let's do it, let's do all these things. And I get, I get your numbers as far as the SRO. And as long as, and I think we need to continue to get SRO, I think she's done some great things. So I don't know if we take these independently, or how we're going about this, I feel like we've just thrown a lot of information in here, and a lot of nonsense.
And, and I agree, you know, it's, it's, I, I listened to you talk, you know, you said, you look at it this way, Ash looks at it a different way, you know? And if there was that supervisory partnership there, then maybe you would spend more time discussing that. Let's not get a cure everything. I'm not saying that's a cure ball, but it's a good way to start, like you were saying, you know? You have the supervision, and you can use Chip with Ash and, and talk about this. Because I don't know how you and Chip and Dick met. I mean, really, Chip is, Ash is,
Chip is too busy right now.
Sure, I seen meetings.
So me and Chip have spoke several different times over this, and he, he, I don't want to put words in his mouth, I don't think that's fair. And he, he couldn't be here because he was busy. But I will say, without putting words in his mouth, that he, he was extremely favorable for this, and he also weirded a lot of the things that I'm saying to you guys up here. Now, you should have your own conversations with Chip about that. That's, that's the most, like you say. Well, he told me that I can say this to you all tonight, that he wishes he could have been here, he wanted to be here, and that he, he wants to figure out a solution to this, because he also agrees that, that the funding that we're currently at is not sufficient to keep this department operating the way it needs to. I agree with you. He is a genius when it comes to this stuff. He's also a very ethical, moral person, and I trust everything he's ever said, because he's done a lot of things that I, I just, I really respect the guy. And I, and I'm telling you right now, that if you had an honest conversation with him, he would tell you that what I'm asking for is, is fair. And if you don't believe me, call me. I talked to him today, he talked to the mayor today, because he wanted the talks before we showed up to this meeting.
The thing that is, could we have those conversations in the next two weeks? And if that's not enough time, like, I, I'd put you, you're back into the wall with two days. So, I'm not saying start it on that day, if you approve it, I'm saying maybe you need to get all rolling on it a little bit, on this top screen.
Sure.
Just in case.
Absolutely, and I'm not, I'm not trying to cut you off. My goal tonight was not to get you guys to vote yes on this tonight. What, what I said in my letter was that I requested a special meeting sometime this month before, because I know Chip can meet with us before then. He said, he said he's, right now he's two to three weeks out on, on work, but he literally told me that he's making this a priority, because he, he feels so strongly about it, that he's willing to meet with us before then. I don't know when that day's going to be. When I talked to him today, I asked him to let me know as soon as he could on when we could actually sit down and talk. And he said he would do that, so I'm, I, I have faith that he will. But I, I, real quick, because I, I know we have so many other things that are important to talk about. I need to say this in, in a, in a public meeting, I, I could not disagree more with the Ash being my, my boss and not the mayor. And that's, I'm saying that knowing that the mayor's leaving in, in three, four months, whatever, I mean, not that soon, but at the end of this term. There's a reason, there's a history why this decision was made, you guys can research that for yourselves. There's also, like I said, I feel that some of the needs that we've had have not been met in that direction. I've, I've asked for funding, whether we meet every day, whether we meet every month, it's not going to matter. I'm willing to meet, and I always have. I've never once turned Ash down for being ever. Like I said, my phone doesn't have his number, it doesn't have him calling me, it has me calling him, okay? So, I don't feel it's fair that this is, I feel like certain people are trying to say that you don't meet with them enough. I meet with them on the, on the things that we're supposed to meet about, and I've never not. So, again, that's one issue. Now, back to the whole funding issue. We really have two things that we need to figure out, the SRO, which I, I totally agree with you, we can meet on that. I'll have the application filled out before then. But I also need to know, there's two things that I have to have before I can submit the application. I have to know that I have your blessing to hire a fifth person, because it technically is a new position. And, and that brings me back to another thing that I wanted to make sure we all discussed, because when someone sees this on agenda, they go, fifth officer, oh my God, these guys are, they're hiring a fifth officer, that's not what we're doing. We have a current officer that's working in the school district full-time, so that brought us down to three patrol officers, okay? The school gives us money to cover the cost of that program, not all of it, but a good chunk of it. So in order for us to have four full-time patrol officers, which is our standard level of service to the city, we have to hire a fifth person. But we're hiring that fifth person under the funding, hopefully, that is going to be through the school and through the, this, the grant, that we will literally, not only it will cover the program, it actually pays us a little bit of money to do the program, which is unheard of. And the fact that I'm bringing that up, and yet we're arguing about it, is, is confusing to me. But even if we couldn't get the top screen, and I did, money's tight, now this is a terrible time to do this. But it is the position that we're in. The, the funding that we would need to cover the additional cost that the school district doesn't provide is minimal. It's much more minimal than if I lose an officer and we have to send someone to the academy. It's much more minimal than if we lose an officer and have to pay overtime. It's much more minimal than if I lose two officers, and then we start this domino effect. Because I don't want to see that happen. I've literally spent my entire adult life trying to build this department to be what it is. The last thing I want to see is it crumble down, you know, on my watch. But I'm, I've never been more afraid, and I, I mean this. I have never been more afraid that I am right now, that this department will not be functioning in a way that we can keep it functioning within a matter of weeks to months. You guys saw my letter. If we lose those two officers, my starting salary right now technically is forty-five thousand, okay? Now, anybody that thinks I'm going to be honestly asking for forty-five thousand, this is where the, the whole budget talk kind of gets me riled up. Because I would never ask for starting salary forty-five thousand, that's way too low, but that's where we're at. So right now, if I were to put an ad out, it'd be for forty-five thousand. I, I literally have a list here of so many departments, you can't even count, they're offering sign-on bonuses, starting six, uh, yeah. So, who's going to apply here for forty-five, lose two officers? Even if I can convince you guys to bring it up to fifty-five, who's going to apply here? If every time we're coming here and asking for, for, just to be treated average, we have to have this type. It's going to be extremely hard for me to find people to work, and that's honestly why we've had so, so many problems trying to find part-time work for those positions. So, I'm more than willing to have that special meeting, that was my intention. I'm not trying to force this on you guys, I don't want you to feel like your back's against the wall. I told it, I said it in my letter, I understand that this is the worst timing possible, I mean, it, it's not good. But all of these things happened to lead me to this position. I didn't have a choice in this either. My back's just as much against the wall as your guys' is. So, I'm trying to do whatever I can to salvage this department before I lose two people. And if, if we can't salvage that, then we can't. If the finances, if the finances aren't there, they're not there, you know, it is what it is. But I just want to make sure that we all are aware of that, and that's what we're facing. Any other questions on any of the other stuff? I'd be glad to ask. I know everybody's probably needing to, to go to other topics and,
We don't need to be here till eleven. Yes, sir. But, but really, I, you know, I mean, I, I get you're in a dire situation, I agree with Mr. Dolly, you know, I just, I, I wish you could tell us why the mayor's in charge. He said, we got to go do research, but you know, we're volunteers, you know, there's, there's extra time to be, I took time off work because we got that letter. I took my personal time away from work to come up here to see what we can do. I called Ash on Sunday because we got the letter that he got people wanting to walk away from their jobs. I get that, you know, if the grass is green, or sometimes you got to say, see ya, you know? That's why when, when Mr. Dolly talks about, you know, the, the management thing, it's like, where's the breakdown? You know, you say he says no all the time. We don't know that, you know? I mean, what, what budget did you give him? They should need it, how much?
I, I don't have it on me right now, but like I said, I have copies of all these things.
You know, I mean, that's something that we're not part of. You know, if he went in there and said, hey, I need seven-hundred-thousand dollars, and you said no, is that his motive or his fault?
Sure.
I don't know.
His job is to, is to figure out for us to do it the cheapest way possible, I get that, that's not my point. I don't, honestly, I don't feel comfortable having the conversation in a public meeting. If, if you guys want to go in a private session, and, and, you know, if he agrees to have those conversations, I would. But I'm not going to do that right here, right now, not, not,
I mean, that's my, yeah, I do, you know, but I, you can see, we don't know, you know, I mean, actually, when I look and say one of those ways, you know, you say no, so I don't know, but,
Any, you know, anybody that knows me knows I'm as honest as I could possibly be on everything, but I also am smart enough to know my limitations.
Sure.
And I'm not going to say certain things, they're probably me, but,
So, and I think as a council, you know, we need to look at some of our responsibilities, too, you know? We do have a situation, you know, we're, we're not disagreeable to trying to run it yet, but we also go look at other options, too, you know? I know we talked about looking at county, you know, if something were to happen, and we lose, we're going to be everybody, the county. County can help us more.
We did this, we did this back five years ago.
That's five years, do we know how we,
That would probably go up in fashion.
Can we, can we, can we be quiet?
Kid, kid.
But, but we need to look at that as an option, that's all I'm saying. We need to look, I don't know numbers. I'm glad you guys do, but I want numbers, I want extra.
Well, five years ago, when we, me and Dave were the only two left, we're eighty-four, eighty-four months. I remember y'all's answer, the council would answer, your salary.
We get to see this friend that, you know, he used to live there. Are we having any calls out? We are looking into both.
Occasionally we'll do.
Like you for me, like you smart for me. That's why I said. Like we actually called to you and you meet up.
Hi, I'm Mira.
And then anything work together to be figured out also.
Being good and I talk about it.
So.
But then you probably get a.
Yeah, I have some stuff like you and I already talked because before that.
Yeah, he plans on.
If the council disappears, it's because the people who drive, we don't need to talk about it. I can't think, we don't need to talk about it.
It sounds like.
No, I know, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, we don't have what makes sense, but otherwise.
And this was long range.
Well, I explained to him that once everything is important, we're gonna be.
We don't really want. I just, I think management, he kind of got tossed at the park. And I just said, you can buy more. I know, even I said ninety percent of. Someone else. Yeah, I don't know.
So I guess when I went with.
No, no. Brother, not hard to figure that question. We don't know what on the run. We make the rule, make your reputation if you have a key. How is that doing that?
Yeah. Two were on and then I think the other two are on tomorrow. A lot of those other master control. We got that whole study out. They were supposed to be really on selling utilities or more so.
Like I've. Because I wanted that out.
Oh, like me, yeah. Fixed your. I just had to fix that. I saw that right around. That is. Those have a thing. That's just. I knew what's worse than that.
Yes, they stuck around.
Good, thank you, Jim. Looking closely doing.
Okay, this is pretty cotton dry, pretty simple. There's three decisions that you guys need to make tonight. The first being, what position do you want to hire for? Do you want to replace me as public works director? Or do you want to go back to the way things were? You had a wastewater superintendent and a street superintendent.
And Jim and I talked about this.
It's going to be easier, in my opinion, to hire a wastewater operator than it is to hire a public works director. But the decision is yours. Second decision would be, would you require residency, which I don't know how you can. The utilities uses a timeline, so their person has to be within fifteen minutes of a response time. That makes sense to me. And the third thing is, what is your wage range? Because as I talk to more people and I get more people that contact me, you know, hey, you know, give me some particulars. I can't give them any particulars because I don't know.
And we've talked about this in how many meetings? Are we gonna hire one or two? You know, and I think you're right, you're gonna, you're gonna be able to hire separately. You know, then try to find somebody combined because the days of hiring a hometown person.
Are over.
Are over. That will do both positions. That's something we just gotta come to.
Because I've talked to numerous operators at different conferences and whatever. And when they find out you're the operator, but you also dig graves and plow snow and, you know, basically operate the swimming pool. That's a whole different conversation. But Jim, if we did hire a wastewater operator, we would specify that he would have to help the public work.
That is correct.
Move snow.
Just like we always did when I was just Bob.
And that's what Jim and I come to. That we came to enhance up to those three things when sharing with you. If you agree with it, that's fine. If you agree with it, that's fine. If not, we can go and take a different route out. We agreed on for the salary to have a study that is salary and subject.
To experience.
I think, yeah, cooks, service and qualification.
Simply for the fact that, I'll make this as brief as I can. A grade, we are a grade three wastewater plant. We are an activated sludge, extended aeration, activated sludge plant. There are numerous other types of grade three plants. So the knowledge base is kind of specific.
True.
So, I mean, somebody may have a grade three plant, but they run an SBR.
Yeah.
Totally different plant.
Yeah.
Totally different operation. So it's, it's finding somebody with, you know, with that experience or can learn that experience. The other thing being, you, your pet hunter dude was talking about, you know, something with the grade two. That would work just fine if that person was ready to go the next day and take their test and pass their test.
I thought that.
There has to be a grade three employed when I leave. It's that simple.
So if we hire by September first, they would have literally until you're.
They would have basically four months for everything. Our collection system or just our treatment, yeah. That's gonna be a challenge, but what's your feeling, Jim? I mean, you and I were in with the head guy in the conversation. And he was asking you, what's your job? He had no idea about it. I'm thinking July, we're gonna have to switch avenues if he doesn't have.
Well, they just have people, they've never placed a municipal operator before.
He came right out and said that.
I don't, we're okay with this. I think the guy helped.
Right.
Second thing is fifteen minute. That is wrong, but that's what Jim and I agreed on.
That's reasonable.
Okay, that's not. And what they said when it was.
Salary.
Salary was a third.
Salary, they said, and the first one was.
One or two positions.
One or two.
One or two positions. I think what Jim and I talked about is the same like he does, you know, and then we will evaluate the salary.
Sure, sure.
And, and he get, he does what you do, you know, working mainly on the wastewater.
Basically, we need to go, my opinion is, we need to go back to the way we were when it was Bob Earhart myself. Bob was the street superintendent, I was the wastewater superintendent. But we worked together.
Yep.
Basically on everything.
Were you like, so I know you're talking about Paul Snow, that's a good example. Is that kind of like your own call type thing? Hey, I need help.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, Bob would call me, you know, at one thirty in the morning and say, hey, we're gonna start at two. Fine.
That's.
Well, that's not.
We had discussed that during the day off and on, because a lot of the time, once the wastewater chores are done, then the rest of the day is.
Exactly.
You know, spent on street projects or whatever.
Yeah, I forgot to put it in this.
The only caveat now is we have three employees that we didn't before.
Right.
And that's, I mean, that, in my opinion, is a bare minimum number.
True.
I mean. We do, we do a lot of things that require a certain number of people on the wastewater side. If we have to make a confined entry in a manhole, that's a minimum of a two-person operation. You have to have a top side guy, you know, to operate your winch and everything else to lower you down in a manhole or a vessel with a plant, whatever. Those are confined spaces. They're very dangerous confined spaces.
And I think we can put that, Jim, in the.
Yes, that's.
You know, that.
Yeah, you have to be sure about how.
Yeah.
This is your primary role. You made me ask for.
Additional.
Second, additional because I like that. So I think there's no, I mean, I, I personally kind of saw the writing on the wall way back.
I don't know why we took so long, but, um, I like those recommendations.
Okay.
So I.
If you're good with it.
Oh, wait a second. Are you planning on moving Josh to public works and only hiring one person?
Yeah, I mean, Josh is based at Public Works now and he's, yeah, he's in shadow and he's pretty good.
Yep.
Okay, we will go with this recommendation.
Okay.
In motion or not?
Okay.
Question on that. You know, we're talking, we have a wastewater superintendent and then a public work or a, uh, street superintendent. That means a salary increase for a street side superintendent?
Not this time.
Okay. So today, we just went through this whole written world, but that was a whole big issue and all of a sudden we're not batting an eye if there's a salary increase here, but.
There's only one, there's only one difference with that, right? I have a budget to support it. Playing something.
Okay. You, you need a motion for those three recommendations?
That's.
I, 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 I'll motion to accept your recommendation.
Check the, the second, you wrote Russell. Yes, Dolly.
Yes.
Calvo. Morgan.
Thank you.
All right, who writes that? You?
What's that? How you want that?
The job description?
Yeah.
I'll work with Sarah.
Cause we need to post everything.
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, seven hearing on nuisance violation, one of four northeast court, Brian Moore.
I'm gonna stop up the city inspector stuff. Got to a point where I feel it's harassment. Takes pictures of fallen tree limbs the day that they fall out of a tree after a storm. Take pictures of my lawnmowers, my cars, things that I've already stood in front of this council, get permission to have parked. I mean, it's, it's still a fun word, it's just harassment.
But Brian, where, you said you've got permission, we've got a new council here.
Okay, well, with the previous council.
Where's the documentation?
You guys didn't give me it, but you were sitting in on it.
But when you, when you.
And why didn't I ask for your stuff today?
Right after the meeting, I went up to your place and you said all your cars were licensed. They were not licensed. I left the meeting and you didn't have the proper license on your vehicle.
What vehicle?
Well, I don't remember what it was. That's.
All my vehicles are licensed.
Not then it wasn't. And now, I mean, I'm gonna have Harrison talk.
I can, no, I can prove that all my vehicles were licensed.
One, part of the problem is you cannot have a trailer that the tires are flat. You got a tire off at the rim on that big trailer with the machine on it. Is there a license on the trailer?
Yeah.
Is there Harrison?
Uh, I, I'm, I'm unsure of.
But it's supposed to be on the ground.
Yeah.
I mean, the tires are flat, sunk in the ground.
No, I'm very much, but there's one tire flat and that can be easily changed.
Then, I'll let you talk and then I'm gonna have Harrison talk on all the violations.
Okay.
You got any more to say about it?
You're basically disagreeing with the.
I disagree with everything.
Yeah. But, but, uh.
Pictures of my lawnmowers, my lawnmowers work, they are used.
And you did bring your old trailer loaded junk up to our town to clean up.
Yep.
I saw that.
Not, you know, I collect scrap to get supplemental money myself and I brought it up here for you guys.
But the trailer and the machine, I haven't seen it move in how many years? It just sits there. How can that be used for your business when it just sits there?
Considering the parts that I've been waiting on for almost four years are in complete back order and since there's so much trouble with shipping and trying to get stuff from overseas, it's difficult.
Well, I'm gonna have you sit down and have Harrison address the problems here. And if there's any question, I mean, you had your right to come to council, his phone number's out there if you need to talk to him again after the meeting for tomorrow.
So the code violations I called out were junk and debris, vehicles parked in the front yard.
Yeah.
Um, so junk and debris, also meaning the snowmobile is sitting there, there's, uh, snow blowers, lawnmowers, all sorts of stuff sitting around the yard. Mostly towards alley side. Um, there's fencing that's laid up against another fence, tailgate for a truck. Um, the trailer that you talked about as well as a man lift that's been sitting on it for years. Um, with flat tires and also had a bunch of weeds growing up around it when I took those first pictures. And it'd be the west side of the yard, there's a enclosed white trailer that's, uh, also has flat tires.
No, it doesn't.
I, I just drove by it and I guess it does.
I can prove it doesn't have flat tires.
So, um, there's, during that first pictures that I took before he took a lot of this up to the dump. There's tree branches out in the yard. Um, there's a toolbox that was sitting in the yard, snow pile blade and plenty of other things are sitting out there. So everything I called out was, was in, there goes the stick too.
So our recommendation now is to make sure the tires are all up, trailers are licensed, and I would say. You have to have gravel underneath that big long trailer. It can't just be sitting in the yard.
Park in the front yard, yes, it does.
So you two can work together, his phone number's on there and Brian can call you.
Okay. So your recommendation is, what can you just say? What's your recommendation?
I already said, get gravel underneath the big trailer, all the tires have to be up and make sure they are licensed this time.
If the trailer. If he's willing to work with me, I'm willing to work with him.
Okay.
I already stated, I put gravel underneath the big truck, or the big trailer. I told him personally, as he was in my alleyway talking to him, that I put gravel underneath the big trailer.
You would.
I would.
Yeah.
Okay.
I stated that to him. So then he said to me something, said it has to be concrete.
Yep.
Well, half the driveways in this town are gravel, so everybody's in a violation at that point.
Yeah, I also asked you to provide documentation of the city allowing you to do that. You weren't able to provide that with me.
Nobody gave me it, I guess.
I waited two times, so. The documentation that I had from the previous council meeting said nothing about any, yeah, approval of giving the vehicles there.
Do you remember when that might have happened?
No.
Two thousand.
The city should have record of it because I was served by the Stewart Police Department my time in Dade.
I know we got some.
And I had my lawyer involved last time. If I have to get her involved again, I'll get her involved again.
I know we had some documentation in here on a, you know, where you were at a council meeting. I don't know if you knew more specifically. When that might have, when that might have happened.
You know, where my white trailer is sitting, I've considered part of my driveway in my book. And I just need to get more gravel for it, because it's, you know, gravel sinks in, gets covered with dirt, that area gets covered with pines, gets covered up.
It says nine twenty-eight two thousand twenty.
Yeah, I, yeah, I didn't know if there's another time that he might have, if that was the only one on there, if there's another time he might have been up here. You know, uh, serving everyone specifically. So right down there, your recommendation is to have rock underneath the trailer, make sure the tires are all.
And the tires are all up and make sure, make sure they are properly licensed and Harrison will go back and.
That's good to see. I lose the follow-up on your recommendation.
Do you want me to make a timeline on that, when that needs to be done, or do you want me to just work with him on the timeline?
Well, I will say no longer than sixty days.
Yeah, okay, sixty days. Okay. Rock and tires license. Okay.
Yours by Calvo.
I'll stay.
Stay. Anything about Russell?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Calvo.
Yep.
Morgan.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, hotel motel tax recommendation?
Okay, every year in the same time, we get the recommendation from the hotel motel tax. And we give like a motion to approve this recommendation. It's okay.
Did you ever find out who's on the committee? Used to be Sean Marks and Jeff Toruskoff, I don't know.
Can you, can I be recognized?
Yeah.
Can you tell us what the recommendations are before you vote?
Oh, you don't? Saint Center twenty-six thousand, Scoop the Loop three thousand, Chamber Director position six thousand. Depot five thousand, White Bull Road paint colors two thousand, Stewart Fremont Ditter nine thousand seven hundred ninety-one dollars. Total fifty-one thousand seven hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Thank you.
No questions, you have a motion.
So at any time, you know, we're talking about this, uh, site plan thing, you know, costs about a hundred fifty thousand. Like, maybe next year could we look at maybe saying, hey, if, if that's something we want to pursue, I mean, that'd be something we could use that far.
Yeah.
I mean, that could potentially help grow the city quite a bit if we can get a big company out there and maybe raise the valuation by millions. You know, might be worth our time, so consider that maybe for next time.
See, sounds like a day.
I'll move that, we, I'll move that.
Okay, how do you go? Russell?
Yes.
Sully?
Yes.
Calvo?
Yep.
Morgan? Okay, West Central Soccer Complex, Mike Albrecht. Sorry, I took so long, I.
Fun, fun as anything.
He's gonna take us up to ours.
There goes. I'm gonna ask him, give us a lot more. You were here. I don't know if you guys read the little letter I attached there, just a couple things real quick, uh, taking the results and see how your, um, result, thanks a lot. Continue to use the sports complex to run soccer, about two hundred fifty kids this year, which is a big number. Hopefully that keeps going up. So the next thing is, I guess, there's been just minor issues, nothing major. Um, and I, in my letter I addressed it and I don't want to speak on that behalf, so be more vocal than say something once. Um, with Jim's experiences, if it's maintenance issue or something, you know, out there, I mean, I talked to Jim and seen everything get resolved. I mean, things take some time, once the thing is just the way it is, uh, especially if like some new door handles got put in out there. Um, knew it was gonna take a while because there's money involved and some other things like that, so. Um, I guess the only other thing, just on some of the smaller administrative stuff, on some of the, so just questions I have on. Stuff that doesn't, not that you guys don't care about it, but it's not, you just have twenty-four things to do and then address what, what we have, we've been a club for a long time, I don't even know the numbers. Um, I just think it, in my opinion, if Matt was more empowered to answer maybe some of those questions, it would make sense that way I have someone direct to go to besides Jim when Jim can't answer it. Those two get together, have disagreements and we go, you know, we figure it out and then Ash maybe, you know, I just don't, some sort of chain of command system to follow it up. But maybe you get some things.
Yeah, it's just like a parking wreck thing.
Well, and actually bar, it's about the only one.
I think it needs to be on the Stewart website. I think that's what it needs to be. I think that it needs to be visual so someone can see. The chain of command was go through me, if I couldn't answer it, if it regarded Matt, then ask Matt fund. If it was repairs, maintenance, go to Jim Henderson. If Jim says, uh, I don't know about because I can't do this, then Ash is the money person that asks the council. That is the chain of command.
Yeah, there's a, there's some clarification on that, uh, and then I'm gonna follow that and the rest of it, I mean, if that's kind of the direction we're going, we don't need to go over the other stuff, it was just.
I was gonna say, if it's a parking wreck thing and you're, you're doing that, right?
Yeah.
So you would be the contact to bring it to actually Ash.
Yes, and that's a chain of command.
That's what you, that would be the chain of command.
No, it would be.
She was.
I went with them, but then would report to Ash.
Right.
Like I don't wanna tell Ash, hey, I want five thousand dollars, so he about full up and go and I said, no, I'm not paying for it.
Because you, because you, I mean, you would work with Matt and, you know, and say, and you said, and then you would bring it to him anyway.
Yes, yeah, we all would, yes. Yes.
Yeah, and then you would present it.
Yeah, I don't think you're doing a lot of stuff like that.
Yes.
I mean.
We're just gonna put it on the website because I think that's what it is, kind of looking for, is it?
I mean, now you know where the chain of command is.
Yeah, I just, I just, for actually to go and where we go, I mean, there was a minor issue with.
Right.
With seed, but Matt and I worked through all that and we get over seed, we thought maybe we were supposed to report the seed on some things and we weren't and there was some miscommunication, but once Matt and I got together, it's, I mean, it's been smooth.
Sure. Yeah, as long as you, as long as you have a single point of confidence, you know, that's the best thing.
Yep.
And then whoever they work with underneath, I mean, you get it, you know, if you talk to her, she's gotta talk too.
Yep, we're, we're gonna update our, you know, some of our bylaw stuff.
Sure.
We're volunteer board as well.
Yeah.
I may not be out in a couple years, so I kind of want to be able to just, and I talked to Matt about that, about getting together with them and saying, okay, at this time of year, we gotta do this with the city and this and talk to these people, make sure everyone's on the same page.
And I talked to you a while back at your house, I think we still have eighty-some thousand and a hundred fifty thousand to work on that sports complex.
Yep, and I spoke to Jim about some of that stuff that needs, you know, things during the works. I mean, I'm willing, I mean, I don't think it's my, anything that gets taken care of out there, we could use the facility. My opinion, it's not my place to say, there's things I'd like to see done, but my opinion doesn't necessarily, I'm curious one club, there's plenty of other public stuff that goes on out there.
Never heard of that.
Well, it doesn't, but you know, it's not, you know, it's not, it's not always our place unless it's up in here, I guess.
Yes.
This is my opinion. Uh, the other, just kind of one direction I need, and I don't know if Matt can answer, Jim can answer or not, so I guess I'll just ask that one. Um, we had, so we reserve the fields for a set period of time. Our club isn't. We had, so we reserve the fields for a set period of time, our club is insured through our insurance when, when people register. That time is up now, well, July, I think we might go through July, actually, July one, we might be covered through Iowa soccer, I'll have to double check on that. And then when our fall season comes around, everyone re-registers and insurance happens. We had some teams ask this year, uh, coaches and teams ask if they could use stuff out there, but it really wouldn't be sanctioned through our club, so I don't really have the power to tell them, yes, I guess, I don't know what the, what, you know, what the city's opinion on that is, I mean, because the kind of point, sometimes it's, it's all a public area, but we reserve fields, so we have some, some reserves around, I don't know how even the term knowledge, you know.
So, yeah, what are, like, give us a panel, what are, what are they gonna use?
They're wanting, like, they want, you know, us to give up a couple fields, so that way they can practice to go to, um, soccer.
Okay.
Now, we won't always be able to keep stuff up though either, I mean, we've got one guy that paints the fields, and if he's unavailable, unfortunately, some of that stuff's not gonna, sure, not gonna happen, but we try to, I guess I wanna be able to try to provide as much, um, resource for anyone that wants to learn the sport or play the sport now, but if it's outside of our seasons, I don't, you know, I don't wanna step on anyone's toes or get anyone upset at the same time, you know, I guess is my.
So if you're not, are they asking, like, when they're not reserved, are they, is it like out of season or something?
Yeah, some of it would be out of season, so, because we gotta balance some of that too, like, we get some leeway with Iowa soccer and our insurance, if it's a Iowa soccer approved tournament, then we get some leeway, but if it's not Iowa approved, Iowa soccer approved tournament, then they're like a insurance, insurance of cover, because we gotta make, you know, official rosters, whatever, whatever these tournaments need to be, or play, so.
I talked to Matt about it, I visited, talked a little bit about it, and I think Matt indicated to me that if there's more of the communication was there over when he wanted, you know, you'll be able to facilitate this whole thing.
No, and I, and we, when, yeah, Matt, now we resolve, we work through all that stuff, it is just kinda in between our two periods, I guess, I mean, does the city care?
It's like, if somebody comes up, yeah, like, if, if we took a team to, to run a set, and they have public soccer fields, can they get on there and practice, do they, do they need to contact the city when they get covered?
Matt, yeah, they need to contact Matt, and that's really where Matt is standing, because you just need more communication with him directly, where he has a schedule, you know, he has a calendar to fill this part.
If I were sitting that far, then I can, that's why I can direct him to Matt, he'll have to say that outside of that, it's not really gonna be a club decision, you know, we don't have the field reserved, you know, otherwise I would talk to Matt, but anything outside of that? I can direct him to Matt as well.
Absolutely.
Right.
Make sure that's the right way to go to. That's all I need.
Thanks, sir.
All right.
Ten, resolution number.
Motion?
Yes.
Second, how do you go, Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Kaba?
Yep.
Morgan? Okay. This one passes, they have a list here, for the number of hours they volunteer to help out.
Yes.
And it's all the highlighted ones that are getting it, so it's not everybody on this, it's highlighted.
Yes, but I don't think that works, so.
Sure, so it's Josh Brenslo, Stephen Martinson, Shane Martinson, Corey Geisinger, Jim Henderson, Ben Swann, Matt Funk, Mike Kaba, and Daniel.
And I just would like to thank them for all of the to, to this, and that's.
How can you do it, Ash? I can probably speak for everybody that are having to do it.
In future, we need a motion to approve the expulsion.
Last second, how do you go, Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Kaba?
I am going to ask things.
Oh, yeah, Morgan.
Yes.
Okay. Womble Place, three quarters.
Sorry, it's an extra. Uh, Forrest Aldrich, you've been strength camp. At the last council meeting, we had talked about sidewalks out in the Womble subdivision, and the direction the crown of council was to, uh, put, allow for a sidewalk waiver on the along White Pole Road for those very south tuned lots on either side of Tiven Way, that, so. That didn't bring Matt.
No, you're right.
Okay.
Right, 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 you're White Pole.
Yeah, right, where White Pole, where you turn into the subdivision I did it. Uh, so this is, I put together two, uh, agreements that would be executed between C and, because they are the owners of the lots right now, and the city of Stewart, and then this would get executed by both parties, and then this would get recorded, so when those lots are sold, this goes with the property, and then whenever the city decides sidewalks need to be there, I would think that's when a trailer would go through, or the White Pole Road gets covered better, or who knows what reason, whatever reason the council wants, then the property owners at their expense need to install those sidewalks. And so this is, uh.
Where was the other one at?
Uh, so we hit this at Quick Star.
Oh, this is Quick Star and out here.
Well, no, no, we did.
No, but for, for these, where's, is that, is that in White, White Pole?
Oh, White Pole, White, north side of White Pole Road, Tiven Way comes in, there's two lots on either side, so it's, uh, it would be a sidewalk going along White Pole Road on the south side of the lots.
Right.
Because they'll, they'll put one in going north.
What's that?
They'll put one in going north, yes.
They'll put it going north, but there's nothing connecting it either way.
But is this, is this, there's two things?
There's two properties.
Oh, there for both, okay.
One's for one property, one's for the other properties.
Hey, it's late now.
Highlighted so the homeowners know in the future.
I, I would hope.
It'll show in their title.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm assuming that, you know, that'll be shared with the.
Kinda like that, the astral road we have.
You need a motion.
I got a little good letter.
Second? Second, how do you go, Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Kaba?
Yep.
Morgan?
Yes.
Now, B?
Um, just before we finish, um, if you could, if, if Matt would take on the, take on shepherding, getting signatures from C and from the city to, and then they work with Sarah to get it recorded.
Okay.
Talking about the waivers for the sidewalks on the, the two lots on our side of, uh, White Pole Road.
Okay.
Or Warren.
I'll make sure he does it.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so. Here I am again, um, so, Macnich has been making progress, they are not a hundred percent done. They got the lift station stuff done, I just talked to Jim before he left, that stuff is done, they're down to some surface restoration stuff. Not a lot of it, I drove out there before the council meeting, but you can kinda see there are some bare spots where the utility, um, kinda dug things up, that's about all that's left. Right now, we owe Macnich about four hundred thousand dollars is what we owe them. They are asking for, and I'm talking round numbers here, they're asking for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in payment for work that they did last year. So that would leave us with two, uh, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars still owed to them. Last time we talked about liquidated damages, uh, we were in about the, and if I went up to where we're at now, it'd be somewhere around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so. We owe them four hundred, they're not asking to bring that down to two eighty, and liquidated damages mostly assessed would be one eighty. So we still have a hundred thousand dollar cushion over the liquidated damages that we would be owed. But I also told them, last time we brought this to the council's attention back in March, the direction was, don't come back until it's all done, done. But they just, they take this to council for consideration, and that's what I'm doing. See what the council's thoughts are on it, I think we're covered still with the, the money, because again, we owe them four hundred thousand, they're asking for one twenty, that goes down to two eighty, and liquidated damages at the most would be about one eighty.
Are we legally bound to, they've got ninety-nine percent of this done, are we legally bound, we should be accepting this? Or is there no, like, we say no, and there is no repercussion for it?
No, I, you should pay them for work that's been done, you really should. Um, if you don't pay them for work that's been done, then yeah, they could file a claim or charge interest or those kinds of things.
And you were committing that we made that payment?
So, the, the last time, would you, would you ask them for a payment the last time, they said, no, we're not gonna pay yet, we paid a bit?
Yes.
They're from them, they didn't do anything then?
No, they done paid.
No, I mean, they didn't, they didn't suggest or anything.
No, they didn't, they, they.
I mean, you know, we're a year overdue.
Yes.
You know, so. I, I get it, I would.
In six days.
Okay. Okay. You know, I mean, I get what you're saying, yeah, I mean, but even if they, what can they get, just what can we get it done?
I mean, they're done with a sub, yeah, to get things done, right, a couple subs to get things done and, you know. And which is a hard issue.
If it was mine, you know, if I was to, if it was my money, you know, how would I, how would I do it, you know, that's the way I can look at it, you know, so, yeah, it's not done. You know, and now we're dealing with other people's money, so.
Another question, when they complete, I'm assuming we pay them in total and then?
No.
You deduct the liquidated damages?
Yes, we deduct that from, we deduct that on the payment that's made, and if they don't like it, then they have to come after the city for that.
And that's based on the taxes we would have had from all houses being built.
Yes, yeah, that was a letter I put together back in March for the council. I didn't, I didn't put that even back, it's a hand, we can go through that in a week.
Three years, I think.
I say we pay, it's work's been done, we wanna keep them moving, show a little sign of good faith on our part, and hopefully they return, but.
We, I know what you're going, but we did that, how many times?
I don't know, but.
Oh, we'll be done in October, we'll be done, we'll be done there, okay, okay, we'll pay it.
And it's not, but I wanna say it's not like they've not been doing nothing.
Right, right.
They have kind of their fences up along the Womble, the ground's a lot smoother, the lift station has been fixed, the manhole's not sticking up anymore on Tiven, so they are, they're, they are doing some things down there, you know. Just to start the conversation.
Second? Second about that thing, how do you go, Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
We still remain two, we're at two eighty and we have one.
Yeah, we're still two, still at two eighty.
Yes.
Kaba?
No.
Morgan? Okay. Thank you, Forrest.
Thanks, Forrest.
Very patient.
Thank you.
You heard that good faith thing.
Yes.
Second? Second, how do you go, Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Kaba?
Yep.
Morgan? What does he mean, city, what does he?
You're all between, the same city, the same, so we are.
Which one is?
I consider for.
Have a.
You're talking about the same different.
Oh, no.
So, the, yeah.
Oh, you're tabling it?
Yes.
Yeah, there was a discussion earlier.
Oh, joint meeting.
Okay, Spirit Economics Development, Director of Manna?
Okay. Sent out a memorandum regarding the old historic first act bank building, AKA the Piney Bank Building. Spoke with Duncan, I don't think they're here today to have any questions, but they are, their initial plan was to remove the stucco and put the building back to brick, but based on feelings, or based on some comments from the last meeting that city council wasn't in favor of the TIF, of allocating TIF in the amount of two hundred thousand, since then, we've had further conversation with the Iowa development authorities regarding the catalyst grant, and they are open to either reinstating or providing an emergency catalyst grant in the amount of a hundred thousand. If the city shows commitment to the project. Dave and Sheila Stone had a ninety-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollar grant, don't consider assessing from point one hundred dollars more, rather than maybe a hundred thousand. City had already allocated like seven thousand eight hundred seventy-five. And is going to go through with that until the building is sold. So they ask us for city to move forward with the TIF, negotiating with the attorneys for a hundred thousand dollar TIF again. Uh, because of the change of the use from a pine wine bar to where they will be leasing it out to a establishment to conduct their own business, whether it be a restaurant or office, case where, uh, because of that, the TIF agreement was all over transferable, but we need to have a new TIF development agreement drawn up.
Historic building, just like the Depot Hotel, I think it's very important, it's in, it's in the history books all over. People stop here numerous times, take pictures of it, if we have a chance to save the building, realize a lot of money within a lot of history.
Yeah, so there is a five inch separation between the wall and the floor.
So.
Yeah, I don't know how much time we have, I'm sorry, I don't. The, the stability of it is questionable in my opinion, and I don't think it should be prolonged, and the state's asking for a letter of commitment.
So they probably pretty sure to get that catalyst if we commit it? Kind of, yes.
The feeling I'm getting, like, they're.
It wasn't placed, correct? The catalyst wasn't placed before the state of Iowa removed it on Tiven Way.
Yes, right. So as long as it's, they see the commitment from us, they're willing to still go through it.
Yes.
That, that's the main thing. It's something on it, so. So the previous agreement, the the, uh, development agreement was approved.
Yes, but the.
There was no money certified.
Yes.
In the TIF.
Yes.
Okay, but the numbers were ran
Yes.
by Chip.
Yes.
And you.
Yes.
And it was presented when the stones had it, that it was feasible to do that.
Yes.
TIF agreement, okay.
What we do it now, we just cancel one and do the other.
Right, and so the council knows, and, and, and we, so, based off what you said last time.
Yes.
Instead of doing like ten thousand dollars a year.
Yes.
Were you, uh, Chip had come up with a way to allocate that down to like nine thousand dollars, or was it nine thousand dollars? For the first three years, which would get us to like, what, twenty, twenty-nine, somewhere in there?
Yes.
Okay, the biggest thing to keep in mind is even when you do that, yes, you know, you probably do that, that is, you know, one-third of that is out of the general fund, but it was already determined.
Yes.
It just wasn't certified, it was determined that, you know, up to the ten thousand dollars a year was okay to come out.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Maybe that's your question?
Yeah, so.
So. Yeah, we were, we were okay to do it.
And that was based on the two hundred thousand.
That was based on two hundred thousand, now it's a hundred thousand, it's just a different.
We can go with the same structure if you want, or you can do it.
I would do it the way Chip suggested, especially considering everything.
Give it to twenty twenty-nine.
Right, you know, and instead of, you know, losing the extra in the general, losing a little bit less.
I see your point.
You know, I mean, with everything else coming up to, that we gotta consider also. You know, with everything else coming up to, that we gotta consider also.
Okay. Well, okay, so.
Yeah, it's fine.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So yeah, Chip had based that step. Reversion or.
Certification.
Yeah, the stepping it up, uh, based on the two hundred thousand.
So he raised the nine thousand on a full two hundred dollars to us.
Now, the one hundred needs, the other one we need ten, because I mean, it's a. It gave him a seventeen, I think it was seventeen, the allocation for ten years, that was, I think ninety-seven, that's my that.
Yeah.
So it was, it was okay, it will meet that nine thousand too. I don't think there's necessity really for a change, making the exchange of the, of the two hundred. Because the, the one hundred will be a ten for ten years, that's me like the nine, that sounds different.
So.
It'll be just fine.
Just like you ten thousand, because it's just a thousand, so I see what you're saying, you know, it was, it was two hundred thousand, nine thousand dollars for the first three years. If you do half of that, a hundred thousand, and you bump that to another thousand, yet at ten years.
Yes.
Well, I thought you were saying since it's only a hundred thousand, ten years, I thought you were saying pay down, pay less the first three years.
Well, that's what I, that's what I thought.
I understand, I thought we were gonna take that same.
You can.
I don't know if we have to.
You, you can if you want, whatever you want.
Benefit.
But with the hundred thousand, it will be ten.
It's not making anything really happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not, you know, at that point, with the two hundred thousand, it makes sense. Instead of doing twenty thousand for ten years, you do nine thousand for three and then you bump it up for the rest of it. Now it's half of that, might as well just do ten thousand, you're still.
Yeah, I think.
Makes sense at all?
Yes, I'd say to me, I don't know.
So ask question if, if you're unsure.
Yeah. It's, it's the same.
I mean, I guess I got a question.
Yes.
We just put a hold on raises. We're discussing all these other financial issues that were him and Holly about, but here we're going, yeah, let's go ahead and do this. Why is this different compared to four hours ago with the council? Well, we need to really talk about this and we need to put a pause on this and really consider this, we don't know what the legislature is gonna do within the next year. It seems like we're all sunshine and rainbows with this. With everything else, we were so combative. And wanting to put a pause on it. And really talk about this and figure it out. What has changed in four hours?
I don't know.
I gather one. One?
Uh, well, I, I think I can explain it, it's like Chief Rehm was saying, it's like trying to compare a capital budget to an operating budget. The neat thing about tiff, well, it's two, two neat things, one is. Project should pay for itself in the long run, if you're doing the minimum assessment three months. So you're, you're borrowing money out of a different pot. Why it's easier for you guys to do, the other thing's nice about it is you're getting a lot of money that normally would go to the school, to the county. Which, that's what the legislators chafed about. Tiff and like different jurisdictions are sometimes not sort of going toward it. Whereas operating budget, obviously, that's a general obligation, if you're gonna pay, your police officers are armed, if you shut. You're gonna have to raise your assessment, you know, which. Chip and I and other people who are begging you to do it, so.
Yeah, but, yeah, last month we were talking.
Just trying to explain the difference.
We were talking, we were gonna be in a budget shortfall because of our expenditure in tiff and tiff. And here we have an opportunity to lessen that impact a little bit more and put us in a slightly better position over the next five years.
Dan.
Something directly related to this, um, part of the discussion that we're worried about with what the state's gonna do. Is if they change school funding so it doesn't come to property taxes, that directly affects the amount of tiff money that you can collect. So I, I'm totally on board with what he's saying, how can we just go ahead with it? Because this is directly affected by what the legislature is gonna do, but we're waiting on everything else on that.
Last meeting, we were, they were wanting two hundred thousand and we had allocated with, that was ninety seven nine. We had previously in our, um, plan, we'd already set that aside for this, so I think, I mean, in my opinion, that is a big difference going on.
And correctly from on two H, if we were to tiff something, the legislature cannot change it to where we cannot pay that, is that correct?
Uh, on the paper, yes, but I don't.
What's that mean?
On the paper, yes, indeed, but because we really have a lot of obligation, but who am I to stand to the state? See what I mean? Well, unless you.
I think, I thought, I thought.
Yeah, if you have to do that, it exists, but I can't predict really that the state is. Let's just, the law will make it, you know, they settle off. And I'm, if you don't mind, I wanna go back before I lose the sound about that specific issues. That was in a place, that tiff agreement was in a place. If they didn't even change the nature of the, what they're gonna do, it will be just a transferring, you know? The previous owner could have transferred that money to them. But because you know they changing what they're gonna do, so we had to have a new development agreement. When we talked about the two hundred, we talked about that, the, the state and all these things. But we went back to the same original dollar amount with a different few hundred dollars, I think, from ninety seven to a hundred. So that was still the same tiff agreement we have, we're just taking it to a different need. That's my answer to it, but I can see your point, very valid point that why we're jumping into it if we're trying to freeze everything, I can see that. Don't get me wrong, I'm just explaining that the specific situation was already in place. It could have been done by that transferring, the ownership.
Yes.
But the change of the nature of what they do, we have to just do a new development, dollar amount hasn't changed, you know?
If there, if the stones had continued to own it and we're still doing it, we could still be paying that, those funds out anyways.
I'm not disputing that, I'm just saying that here the, the agreement is been nullified by the change in scope. And we have the opportunity to say. We are well overextended on tiff, here we have an opportunity to claw a little bit back. That was allocated and doesn't need to be allocated now.
They bought that building with the understanding that there was funds available. If they had known that funds would not be available, I'm quite sure they would not have entered into that agreement.
And I understand that.
And. So, um. There was an anniversary date also of a building that fell down, east of us. You are aware that there's a structural issue.
I am.
So. If the building falls. We, the city, have an opportunity to do something about it.
I get the history, I get the importance of this, but, and I get that there's structural defect that was part of the purchase and fully understood.
Okay.
So is the city told them that they would do a transferment tiff obligation?
Yes, I checked with all the contractors. And, yeah, so it was told to me that the. Tiff agreement could be transferred. So as long as it follows the guidelines, the only change in the guideline is they're not operating a pine line bar. They are going to lease it out for anybody else to run a fine line bar or any other establishment. It's not that it's gonna be left, both they left empty, they're going to remodel it and with the intention to. Put a business in there, it could be easier for a business to get in there because then they only have to rent instead of having to come up with money to purchase a building.
Well, there are ten other properties available for rent, clock tower, hotel, couple other buildings.
And that's due to marketing. So I'm. Trying to scroll the background and property manager. It comes down to marketing, whether or not you have a vacancy.
And because of the minimum assessment, you do start to get that money back.
Yes, is that correct?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not where you're investing in something where you're not seeing any return. You start to get that money back and then when that obligation is paid, then the, you get even more back into the general fund. It's, you know, it's a little, it's a small deal on the general fund right now, but with the increase in value, I don't know the minimum assessment is right now. Uh, with that increase, say if it's a hundred thousand right now and the minimum assessment is four hundred. That's where you realize your tiff and stuff, and then once it comes back, you know, then you're gonna start getting that money back in the general fund. It's not just that we're handing money out and you're not getting anything back.
No, a hundred.
Yeah, so, you know, and I, I, I see your point, I know you, we've tried to pump the brakes on this, uh, on some bigger projects. I know, uh, when I spoke with Chip, he said there's small projects that you can still do. Uh, and you, you gotta pick the ones that you really want to, you know, so. You know, everybody said, you know, the mayor said it's historical, it is, you know, and almost. One of the centerpieces of downtown, right on the corner, the old hood's corner, as I remember it being called. Um, so, but, you know, that's kind of my two cents. I know it's not just a losing investment, you know, it would be if it fell down immediately, so.
So I think the mayor is asking for a motion to go see. And turn the issue to the board of directors. If we are in agreement to go with the hundred thousand.
What's the timetable on that? Do you think it's fast, how, how quickly then, because the catalyst revolves around that?
Uh, potentially. Yes, so. Well, they would start doing their work on the building and then go through the catalyst grant, catalyst grant. Um, so.
Well, we'd have to, we'd have to come back and prove that again, would we, do we have to see that again?
Yeah, but then see what the process is, you're gonna have a development agreement.
Yeah.
Now we're just giving the initial approval from the council to move C.
And this would show our commitment to the people of Catalyst Grant.
Yeah.
So they could.
Like, yeah, that's all kind of, like, do we need to, would that need to be set in stone, so like now you're talking this catalyst grant, you're talking. Over a month from now before we.
The process will take, by next meeting, we decide in a day to a public hearing. And then months after, we'll have the hearing and the approval for development. That's the process of that. He might start to, he can start to muck up as a motion if you approve, to communicate with the catalyst.
So here, I just have to add that if. The building is up and standing and the minimum assessment agreement was approved, all that is processed. Because eventually it pays it off, you're not out anything, it's not a gift, you're not giving money away. But you generated another source of revenue. Later on down the, down the road, whereas if you don't, then you never get that form of revenue. And if.
You have to make a lot.
You have to make a lot. You have to make a large. And. There's another building that is connected to it.
Oh, yeah, it's, uh, what, what is it, uh, the search thing, yeah?
Yes.
I respect you.
So you could potentially lose two. I get it.
We would, because our utilities are in the basement of that building.
So, do we have that lesson?
I'll be the, the bad guy, I'll move every cent of this on the.
Second, how do you vote, Russell?
No.
Dolly?
Yes.
Come on. Thank you, Matt, let's see, you got All Saints.
Yes. This brought up in the, uh, meetings, or the last meeting that, uh, Jim Anderson said this, he did take all the responsibilities of. All Saints Lot Thirty-three water retention basin. Took that to a C. They would agree to. Have the lots lit up, they just wanted to make sure the city council was understood that. When builders obtain lots, they have to put a sidewalk on the property. And so the sidewalk would be required. And then also to cover the legal fees to separate a lot. Legal fees would be forty five hundred and a sidewalk, estimating the cost of a cable in-house. Me or Jim or somebody. Does the. Management of it, it'd be about five thousand per sidewalk.
So you're saying we'd have to put the sidewalk in without separating lots, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Oh, just making sure.
On the east side of the stormwater retention basin. If you wanna get that lot separated and make it more appealing to builders.
So the builder wouldn't have to put it in?
There would be, that would be on the builder's side.
You, you just talked him on the.
Just on the.
Be a one hole lead from northeast side up to where the stones used to live.
I see, okay.
There's a sidewalk there right now.
All right. Is that just for informational purposes?
Somebody's gotta spend the money.
All right, what are we doing here?
So if you wanna, if you wanna get the lot separated, are you gonna make a motion to do that or?
Last meeting, Jim proposed splitting the summer water retention.
Right.
Pond off of Lot Thirty-three so that a builder could just purchase the west eighty feet of Lot Thirty-three.
Right, I'll be honest, I thought it was just done at that, but definitely it's not on it, so that's my, my bad, so. I mean, we talked about it, so, I mean. Yeah, again, it's, you spend money, but. It's, it's a potential revenue, a potential revenue if you get a building on there too, you know, where there's just stuff for land right now, you know? So, and that goes into, as part of the figures on, uh, the tiff, you know, when that was done. That you gotta have a house there to recapture that, that money, you know, and he'll pay for that, you know, with that too. So, so it's about seventy five hundred altogether?
Yeah.
What did, what did Steve, I mean. What was Steve's thought on that, like, I mean, that thing is that vacant for, it's doing its stuff?
No. It is.
I, I think the city having more green space is a good thing, but that's just my personal thing.
Yeah, we said we have that green space.
But we have to move, we have to maintain that.
But Jim says.
Not getting any money.
He said, oh, he said there's stuff we can put in there, like, I noticed, uh, there's a retention pond.
Yeah, we're talking about just the retention pond part.
Well, I mean, there's still will be more ones to do, but you could put, I mean, there's like cattails and stuff we can put in.
Yeah, I know he was doing that, so it's kind of minimal maintenance.
Right.
Down there, but you still need to look at getting a lot with a house basement on it, you know? And, and I'm just gonna ask, I don't, I know you don't represent, is, would Steve split that with us or is it just totally up to the city? It's fine, if it, if it's totally up to the city, just say it, but I'm just asking.
I'm not gonna speak for Steve, I don't think.
I didn't, I didn't know if that's a consideration, but they even discussed that, or they just said, hey, this is what the city is doing.
Steve wants a house there too, so maybe, I don't know.
Can we do this, can we do this, that we make a motion to put the sidewalk in and spend the money? But part of us paying everything, we have Matt go back, for somebody to go back and ask Steve if they'd be willing to split, split that with us. If they do, we split it, if not, we go for it, but that way we.
So now you got people here, they'll pay for it, just saying no. They'll pay for it, just saying no.
I know.
Is that a motion then, Mike?
Any discussion, I mean, come on, I, I don't want people to want to talk about this.
We will do this really soon.
It's a.
Well, I just say, it's, it's, it's just. Yeah, it'd be great to see what Chip ends, but it's a price we want to pay to get more money back, it is an investment, and it's that long enough.
If you just, if you don't wanna do that, and just, we're seeing that.
Maybe. It's just the sidewalk off the next.
And the seventy five hundred would be seventy five. Plus seventy thousand. If you gotta do it, let's do it.
It's not gonna get any.
I don't think seventy five hundred dollars big, I can see your point, we'll ask. We'll ask him, if he said yes, said yes.
I know what's.
Would be.
I thought what I would do in that situation, he'd be like, no, but you know.
I'm not. That's.
Next, he's gonna be though.
Yeah, so it's, it's.
Doesn't matter, because it's like, he's gonna go and then we're gonna pay for it, so.
Yeah, I mean. It's all safe. Would you rather just do the seventy five hundred?
I think it's inevitable, so I like this, let's give it a try, it will fail.
Well, we'll do the seventy five.
So how do you go, Russell? Dolly?
Yes.
Paul?
Yep.
Morgan, you have one question, Matt, what do you got, one basement under the dog so far?
Two now.
Two. Yeah, there's a five.
Are they still waiting on pins?
Uh, not for five that are.
Okay, because I heard that too, that we were waiting on.
They were.
That's what we just talked about, the retention.
We skipped it, okay, don't you need a level of commitment?
That was, uh, that was with the dungeons, that was, they should probably have been.
So we're good now, is you?
Yes.
So public forum.
I wanna answer your question. So the people on the seed is, or people on, um, your hotel multiple task committee.
Yeah.
Cheryl Marx, Jeff Swartzcott, and John Swender.
Yeah.
Just so we know.
Okay.
Ten two. No public forum?
Perfect.
I just have a quick one. Six eleven arcades, is the house gonna burn down? Who is responsible for mowing it and taking care of trash?
Trailer house?
Yes.
It's in, it should be in the works, the guy who owns Mexican restroom, I talked to Lori the other day. It's within a couple days, he ought to own it and he's gonna clean it off. Okay, I'm just curious, because it's. He's gonna build a brand new house. Yeah, I know the inspector's gonna bring in a note too, but I've been, we've been trying to mow, the neighbors been trying to mow, and it's. No, it's in the works.
We're just tired of the trash and constantly cleaning it up and all the critters.
The roof has literally caved in last week because of the wind, so. I just didn't want to all get hurt, or I just wanted.
They should be here.
He's tired of it.
Are you gonna go to forum or no?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Five minutes.
Five minutes, all right, well, I don't anticipate it to take that long. Um, you know, I think what the big, from my perspective, right, as a department head. You know, that the discussion earlier is a discussion every city has with every department, no matter where, right? Uh, it's always gonna cost more money, that's just a year after year thing, no matter what level you're at, what department you're working for. I think that the, that the takeaway is, or, or the. Really comes down to. What support do you guys have for these departments, right? Do they feel supported, do we feel like you guys are willing to say, okay, well, let's figure this out and let's do something about this? Or do we just come up here time and time again, get the same answer, that, you know, no real, we just kick the cane down the road, whatever, you know? We don't have a vehicle rotation. We're at the point, you know, that you have to have police, you have to have fire, but what happens when this happens to the rescue? You're right there already, you don't have to provide an ambulance to anybody, you guys work for the people, right, we've mentioned that. How are they gonna feel when we get to a point that, that the rescue can no longer go out, you know? Are they gonna agree with that, or are we gonna sit here and say, okay, we need to figure this out? And the other part of that is, is you guys all sat up here, I don't think there's a person in this room that would not agree that Chip. Does an excellent job, he knows what he's doing, he is word is to be trusted, he sat up here and told you guys on multiple occasions. This is gonna be a problem, he didn't necessarily draw all the answers, but you guys didn't wanna hear them. And then you just went with what you went with, and now you're, we're trying to, you know, backpedal to figure this out and then say, oh, let's get Chip involved, and I think that's a great idea. Absolutely, he needs to be involved, he'll come up with a solution, you'll get it done, but to, to sit here in public meetings and then essentially tell him that. Thanks for the idea, Chip, but now we're just gonna do whatever. You know, it just seems kind of silly then to come back and go, oh, we're gonna need Chip to help us with this. When he tried, you know, and we would still be in the same spot where we would still be going up to Chip and asking him to help out, but at least we would be in a better position, we wouldn't have to. You know, scratch and claw so much, you wouldn't have to have the same discussion about now we need to cut this off. And so that's really just my sense is, is what are we doing as a council? You know, because Ash handles the finances and stuff like that, he does a lot of stuff. But ultimately, you guys make those, a lot of those final decisions, and so what are you guys doing to say, we support you and we wanna see this work? And let's find a way to do it, and I'm not saying like just throw whatever, you know, oh, we all need a million dollars, right? Of course not, but. There's more to it than that, just like you asked, what would your answer be, well, if you asked me that, my answer would be work with Chip, find out what we can do, what we need to do. To do this and listen to him, you know, and, and work all together, and that's just not how I saw it going. You know, January, February, March or so, and we were set in the city budget. And, and to me, that's disappointing, because then we're sitting up here and, and you're watching. Four people that five years ago, you said, we commit to you, we're gonna do this. And now you're watching them essentially walk away because you're like, nah, I don't know, shoot, maybe it's worth it, maybe it's not. So that's my recommendation to you guys, that's just my opinion, but.